All right. Hello, everyone. In compliance with Chapter 551, Open Meetings of the Texas Government Code, I call to order a regular voting meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Thursday, May 16, 2024, at 6:04 PM. A quorum of the board is physically present here at the AISD Central Office to conduct this meeting. This meeting is streaming live on AISD TV and Apple TV. It's also being broadcast on Cable Channel 22 through Spectrum, a sound broadband, and on Channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. So, welcome and thank you so much for joining us. So, Superintendent Segura, how many more days?
There -- well, I'm not counting today.
Okay.
So, that'll be five days.
Okay, five days. All right.
As soon as I wake up and start, like, the first email that day is already, like, I've counted it. It's done.
All right. Well, yes, we are just one week away from the end of -- from the end of school and at the start of our senior graduation ceremonies next week. So, AISD will hold graduations starting next Wednesday, when the Rosedale School and Garza Independence will recognize their newest graduates. We will then continue with other high schools on Friday and Tuesday through Thursday of the following week. All high school graduations will be televised, and for the first time, AISD will also provide Spanish interpretation at each ceremony. That's fantastic. Yes. So, congratulations to our Austin ISD future graduates and all the families, teachers, and staff who supported these students through their K-12 experience. We are so excited to celebrate with you all next week. I wanted to make one special thank you that trustee Zapata brought to me, and this was there -- a couple of weeks ago, we had an Education with Heart Fiesta at Mendez Middle School on May 4th. Really appreciate trustee Zapata's leadership on that and the team for really stepping up and making that happen. We have a few partners I wanted to thank. Marie Ortiz and Katia Guzman with the Emma Esparianthos Mexican-American Cultural Center, Dr. Angela Valenzuela from UT, and co-host Blair Waltman with Austin PBS. So, I look forward to having more such community events, leading with love. So, our next item is committee reports. We have posted the written committee reports as an attachment to this item on our Board Docs agenda. This includes a committee report for the Austin Ed Fund. And next up is the superintendent's report.
Fantastic. I believe we'll be pulling it up here momentarily. So, good evening, President Singh and members of the board. You've got your presentations very quickly, very efficiently. They're going to pull it up here in just a moment. Yes, trustee Kaufman?
Can I just take a moment to highlight something that the president, Singh, brought up, which is the simultaneous interpretation into Spanish of all of our high school graduations? And that is a -- I mean, that is a momentous step forward in being an inclusive district that recognizes and values all of our families. And I'm just extraordinarily proud to be part of a district that's taking that step with the logistical challenge that poses in a district this size with graduation ceremonies that are so large. So, that is a huge deal, and I want to commend the team for making that happen.
Thank you, trustee Kaufman. And every year, we try to improve, get feedback, make adjustments. And yes, it is a logistical challenge, making sure everybody's safe, enjoys the ceremony, and gets home and continues the celebration.
That's right.
Just before the jokes start coming, appreciate y'all's patience, appreciate our community's patience. So, yeah. Good evening, trustees. I'm back to share the latest accomplishments of our students, and there's some pretty amazing things this month. As President Singh just said, we're very close to the end of this year. I cannot believe it has gone this quickly, but just so appreciative of all the support as we've moved through this year and excited to see what our students do over the course of the summer and always, always remembering to be safe as they explore different opportunities and just have a good time. So, as we move forward, first, I'd like to highlight Navarro Early College High School. Our CTE students won second place in the Area 12 Applied Agriculture Engineering Contest. Congratulations to students Leonardo Hernandez and Gael Salgado and Wesley Gurlich, who also won individual awards. So, pretty incredible to see that. Next up from Lhasa, the Future Business Leadership of America Club competed at the Texas State Leadership Conference in Galveston last month. You can see them all there. And 55 students are heading to the FBLA National Competition in Orlando next month. Next up, our journalism programs are -- I mean, we've heard a lot about them lately -- are racking up the awards. To continue to do so, Aitkins, Bowie, and McCallum High Schools all earned awards at the Annual Intergalactic League Press Conference Spring Convention. Bowie's Dispatch and McCallum's Shield newspapers earned two of the five statewide Gold Star Awards. Eagle Eye from Aitkins won a Bronze Star. The Dispatch and the Shield Online also received Gold Stars for online news. The Roar Yearbook from Kuritzky Middle School and the Lone Star Yearbook from Bowie won Gold Star Awards in the Yearbook Division. Congratulations to these student journalists. Next up, the Burnett Middle School Esports Team competed in Dallas against middle schools from all across the state. You can see them right there. They won first place in the first round, advanced to the state, then won state in the game called Valorant. Congratulations to the Burnett Sailors. Next up, Austin High School sophomore Eleanor Ewing earned the Girl Scout Gold Award for her project on epinephrine across access in Texas schools. Eleanor worked with a state representative to introduce a bill, HB number 2261, of the 88th legislature, requiring schools to stock epinephrine and educating school districts regarding the opportunity to stock free epi pens through the Cameron Espinosa Act. Awesome job, Eleanor. Thanks for making our schools a little safer. That's pretty incredible. And a big round of gratitude for Gwen Zaffrina and Harvey Henderson from Dos Elementary School and Pharrell Harper from Cassis Elementary School. These students were among the top fundraisers for the American Heart Association through the Kids' Heart Challenge Program in Austin. Gwen was a top fundraiser in Austin, followed by Harvey at number three and Pharrell at number eight. Thank you to these students for keeping our community's heart healthy. So, remember last month when we were congratulating the Lamar Middle School archery team who was headed to Nationals? Remember that? Did you know that we have -- I mean, archery is a big deal, y'all. Well, they brought home a first-place trophy from Utah. That's pretty awesome. Yeah, congratulations. Yeah, that's pretty incredible. And what's -- you know, it's interesting, and what's really fun about this is they were competing over the weekend, and so it was really fun to see the texts and tweets get sent out. A lot of just great support around those programs and very excited how the students performed. And so, with that, as you can see, we have some amazing things happening in our schools. Thank you for letting me share these incredible moments and accomplishments, and this concludes my presentation.
Congratulations to all our students.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, congratulations. All right. So, thank you. So, our next item is an update on our intruder detection audit. So, Mr. Segura?
Absolutely. Thank you, President Singh. Tonight, we have Dr. Jacob Reach, Chief Officer of Governmental Relations and Board Services.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Segura, Board of Trustees. So, I'm here tonight to provide our intruder detection audit, and it will be the last one of the year because all 112 Austin ISD schools have had an audit conducted at this point. So, we are at 100%. Since we last met, we had 19 schools that have had an audit conducted, and at least one of those schools failed to meet a standard during the audit. Those have been uploaded in the executive section for our Board of Trustees, and we would be available if there are any questions on our intruder audits for this year.
All right. I know. Yes. I do have one quick question, actually, on that, Dr. Reach. Is it typical to have every single campus and a school district audited?
It is not. The requirement is that 100% of districts must have at least one school, and for districts that have more than one school, which is a little bit over half of them, at least 75% of them should be audited. So, we were not expecting 100%. Actually, when we got above 75, we thought maybe we'd be done.
Yeah.
But we are now at 100.
Okay, great.
And, Dr. Reach, last year, I recall, we were on 87%, 85%? Is that right?
That's correct. We were right at 85%.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you to everyone who's responsible for keeping our schools safe. All right. So, next, we have an update on our budget.
Absolutely. President Singh and board members, I'd like to invite up Ed Ramos, our Chief Financial Officer, Jacob Reach, our Chief of Governmental Relations and Board Services, and Heather Petrazini, interim Chief of Staff, to support the conversation. And as they bring up the presentation, this is a continued effort to ensure that we're engaging with the board, providing updates along this process, making sure our committee understands where we are. And this is an update and certainly happy to answer any questions that we have at the conclusion of the presentation. And so, I believe we're pulling it up here in just a second. All right. So, one of the things that I think is worth sharing with the board is that on Slide 2, you know, we, as leaders in this organization, as us and as staff, conducted a line-by-line analysis. If you see, you know, some of our team members in the back, you know, the kind of the kind of the experience that we've had over the last week, I will tell you has been challenging. I don't know that, as a district, we've ever gone through our budget like this, line by line by line. I think it's important that we talk about, like, what you find as a leader when you have thousands of costs, right, within your organization. And so, I really challenge the team to ensure that everything that was brought forward was defined, detailed, and we could truly take credit for a, you know, cost-reduction strategy. In times past, I know that there were big round numbers, and we talked about taking efficiencies and different things like that, but oftentimes, we were assuming that we would find reductions, but not necessarily identifying specifically line by line within each org what those would be. And so, that was conducted. That was completed, and as long as I've been here, I have not seen that be done. So, very appreciative of the team. I know it's some long nights. I asked some difficult questions, and so, you know, with that, we'll get moving with the conversation. I do want to point out also that, you know, in a system of this size, given the various databases that we oversee, sometimes, you know, asking questions around different data sets that maybe don't pass the smell test, right? And I really challenge the team to think about numbers and, like, does this make sense given your experience managing this org? And if it doesn't, let's test it. Let's get into the weeds of it. And Ed and Brandy and the leadership that they've shown has allowed us to kind of get into the weeds and ensure that everything truly is aligned. So, when we make a reduction, we know that we've already turned over every stone before we even get to that point. And so, to date, we have identified and confirmed $29,346,483,000 in cuts. You know, several weeks back, we talked about $30 million, you know, being the goal, and then we also talked about the average daily attendance and the property value, kind of information that came across in late April, and the fact that that number has increased. And so, you know, for me, it was really important that we shore up to 30 million. Like, we have to make sure those are real dollars before we commit to taking the next step, because as you saw in the previous presentation, some of the next steps are difficult steps to take, right, and really require perhaps a different process. And so, this slide on Slide 3 summarizes what those are. For those following along at home, we will be providing this presentation as an upload to Board Docs, but as you can imagine, we are working, like, up until, you know, just before the board to confirm different numbers. And so, going through org by org on Slide 4, what I'm going to do is identify just different highlights that may spur some questions or conversations. So, this here is the Police Department. You can see the total cost reduction of $691,000. The point that I'd like to make here are two. The first is that we were able to move a lot of the district's technology costs to bond dollars. So, one of the things that we're able to do that wasn't always the case is purchase, you know, laptops with bond dollars. And so, we have since carried those line items in every one of our orgs, and so going through and sweeping that has allowed us to identify some cost-cutting strategies. The other thing is that when we talk about staffing, I want people to -- in our community to know that, you know, we are committed to ensuring that we continue with the HB3 requirements that the board committed to. And when we talk about FTE or full-time equivalents and reductions of those positions, these are not campus-based positions. These are not campus-based officers. I want to be very, very clear, that's not what this is. These are positions that support the larger organization and are currently vacant, and we've had some challenge filling them. And so, we are able to take that, and we can still operate and be compliant with all the needs required by the state, as well as what we need to support our campuses. So, moving on to Office of Organizational Transformation, the one thing I want to point out here is the Ombudspice Office is within this org, and so we did make some adjustments, but we want to be very, very intentional, because there are many things that we, as an organization, value and want to ensure are supported and protected as we build up kind of the next iteration of Austin ISD, right? And introducing the Ombudspice Office is a commitment by the board last year and the administration was something we wanted to ensure was supported, and we -- but we also acknowledge that maybe some of the things we wanted to do as we promote or communicate out what the office does or how we engage with families, you might need to pull back some of those resources associated with it. We are still confident that we can do this and do it very well, but you can see here, some of the travel was maintained. That's mainly -- I'm sorry, professional development associated with the Ombudspice Office is maintained because the accreditation is required. And then, some reproduction costs are reduced, just acknowledging that. You know, there are other ways that we can share out with our families, all the things that the Ombudspice Office will do and how it's going to support our current organization, as well as the introduction of a future position for Special Education Services. So, moving to the next slide, Office of Teaching, Learning, and Leading. This is a larger org, and just before I move on, these are all central office and non-campus based reductions. Like, that is still true. We've talked about it. We haven't made it -- we haven't deviated from that strategy. And so, on the Office of Teaching, Learning, and Leading, the one thing I do want to point out here is that we are going to be reducing our reliance on special education contractors. This is something that we kind of went back and forth on, because when you go contract by contract, what you realize is that all contracts aren't leveraged in the same way, right? It's always based on student need. But we believe that with investments in certain areas, as well as the buildup of the current infrastructure within Austin ISD, our reliance over time will reduce. And so, and also, honestly, the structure of how those contracts are set up will allow us to take some of those cost-reduction strategies. And so, just want you all to know, this does not adversely impact our special education initiative. In fact, I would say that it actually aligns, because we need to be a self, like, supported system. And so, I do want you all to know that these things have been vetted, have been discussed, and I do know there is alignment within the system, as well as within those working with us. Moving on to the next slide, Finance. The one point I want to make out here is the reduction in full-time equivalents. You know, last year, we turned over the new ERP system. You know, historically, we had Bolt, and we moved to ERP and frontline, which allows us to become more efficient in how we do our work. And so, the majority of these positions are identified because of the efficiency created by that system improvement. Many of the other things, the overtime, the contracts, those are line by line, but the one point I wanted to make in this specific org was the efficiencies tied to ERP. Government Relations and Board Services. One point that I want to note is that the Legal Department is within this org, and so you're not going to see General Counsel as a separate organization. It's within this org itself. This is also the org that supports the board. And so, whenever the board has travel or the board has expenses to support, it comes out of this org here. You know, we had made some adjustments within it, but it's not a, you know, very, very large budget. The other thing I want to point out is the expenses for -- the expenses for elections is also within Jacob's org. So, there are just certain things that we cannot get away from. So, I know when folks look at different numbers, like, well, this org is small, like, why is the expense so high? There are these things that I want to point out that maybe are unknown to most folks, but those are things that we absolutely have to have. We have to have elections. I mean, trustees, you know, there are election cycles. We have to consider that, and we have to cost and budget for it. Moving on to the next slide, on Slide 9. You know, we want to be really intentional, because in the first iteration of the cost-cutting or cost-reduction strategies, we identified 41 positions. The net of that was a little over 30. And so, this is what I wanted to do was to show kind of how this evolves over time. And so, when we originally identified the opportunity, it reflected a restructuring within the department. And then, as part of working with partners and kind of bringing back some services in-house, including mentoring and badging, we had to adjust accordingly and provide an offset to support that work. So, I'm kind of taking you through all this, because if you think about when we started this back in February, these are the things that have occurred over time that make these adjustments, and so we're trying to capture them in real time and make sure that our board is understanding where we are at each and every time along the way. And so, you can see some of the notes there, and I do want to point out, you know, as we move forward, you will have a list of all of these. There's a lot here, and there's a lot of detail here, but specifically, you will have them all listed out. Operations, as you see on Slide 10, overtime is a big cost savings for us here. Over the last couple of years, we've inflated our overtime budget really as a need to offset the vacancies that we had within a variety of departments, within the operations divisions. And so, we always use the example of grounds. You know, when we weren't paying $20 base minimum pay, it was very difficult for us to maintain the number of grounds crews that we needed to support our campuses. So, what happens? Well, they work weekends. They work evenings, and that overtime adds up, and we have to account for it. So, this is an acknowledgement that, based on the work that the board has supported and led, and we've been able to reduce our reliance on overtime in that way. And I want to be very clear, this is not eliminate overtime. You see that there's still a number there, because, you know, we are going to have unforeseen conditions. Things will happen, and we do have the budget to set aside to cover those costs when they do occur. Staffing adjustments. This is, again, you know, some adjustments that we made. These are FTEs identified through efficiencies, and then the 199 staff to bond. So, whenever we pass a bond, the bond is able to pay for those individuals who are working solely on bond work. It's not unlike paying for a general contractor and paying for the superintendent or the project manager, right? Those are FTEs. They're not buildings or material, but they are, I don't want to say labor, but they are personnel that are used to support the bond program. And so, we had that internally. And so, it may not be known to many people, but for many, many years, many folks within the Construction Management Department have been paid for out of bond proceeds. And so, it's just been carried over from the 2013 bond to the 2017 bond to the 2022 bond program. And so, as you can imagine, as when you pass a $2.44 billion bond and the work increases, we added staff, but we didn't actually change the code for how we pay for them. So, what we've done is gone back and made that correction, which allows us to take it off our general operating budget or 199. And before I leave this, just to make sure everybody sees, across all of these, we're removing technology, because we can pay for that with bond, and also reducing those -- the expenses tied to operational efficiencies, which might be like paper or supplies, right? So, when you see that down at the bottom, that's what that represents primarily, and there's a lot of things that are included in it. Moving on to the next slide, Office of Talent Strategy. The one thing that I do want to point out here is we did -- I specifically asked the teams to significantly reduce travel expenses, and I know the board is committed to doing that as well. And so, what that means for us is, you know, all the professional development tied to travel, we really are going to encourage that to occur locally, and so I think there's a commitment to do it. But I also want to acknowledge that, you know, within talent strategy, you know, in order to recruit, we actually have to travel with outside that zone. You know, we have to go to the valley, or maybe go to Dallas. We have to go to different areas to recruit, and so we want to make sure that that budget is preserved. So, if you went and compared proportionally the reduction in costs, you would see the talent strategy has a slight increase, but it's really to reflect that work that needs to continue. As we move on to Information Technology, the reduction in FTEs, again, this is, I think, largely tied, what I would say, to system improvements over the last couple of years, including ERP. ERP, I think, most -- it impacted most from an efficiency perspective, technology, talent strategy, and finance. Those three are kind of like the hub for that work. Next slide, if you go to Slide 13, Superintendent's Office, reducing one position within Superintendent's Office, as well as reduction in contracts. You know, some of these contract budget items are not necessarily contracts, but they are budget items tied for contracts. And so, we're reducing those, acknowledging that, you know, we have the ability to explore that at a future date, but right now, that's not something we really need to consider. And then, operational efficiencies are just reliant -- reducing our reliance on those kind of other direct costs that just build up over time. Everybody has them in every single budget. And so, as we move on to next steps, I do want to point out a couple of things here, because they are new. Between May 16, which is today, and June 6, the information session, we are going to continue to review vacancy positions. And to be clear, this is outside any vacancy savings that Ed counts on for our overall budget. And these are also non-campus-based staff. And so, what we're going to do, because we have hundreds of these positions, I didn't want to go in and reduce unless I understood, and we all understood precisely, how this position supports the district. And I think only now, since we've gone through this level of detail, can we now explore this. And so, the idea is between May 16 and June 6, we'll go through that process. We are going to be looking at recommending a hiring freeze for non -- again, non-campus-based staff. I want to be very, very clear. Principal needs to hire a teacher, we're doing it. Counselor, we're doing it. What I'm saying here is that if there are central office positions, I want to ensure that each of them come to my office for approval. And so, it's a freeze, and I, you know, and I understand what freeze means, because right now, we're carrying these in our budgets, and I want to make sure we have the opportunity to look at kind of re-envisioned or realigned AISD before we continue to approve some of these positions that are currently vacant. And so, again, we'll go through that process together. There are structures in place that allow for it. Sometimes, we are very intentional. Sometimes, we are not, I would say, historically. As we move forward between, you know, June 1st and what I would say is probably going to be November, we're going to be very, very, very intentional about each FTE vacancy that is filled. And again, non-campus-based, just want to be very, very clear. We have the Board Information Work Session on the 6th, and then the Board meeting on June 20th. We are at a point where we're going to have to look at a realignment. You can only go so far by trimming. We have to really think about how we work in central office, how we work as a support system for our campuses. And for me, you know, that has to be done before we explore anything that's going to impact our schools. And so, what I'm recommending is to start that process as early as the end of July. It will not require a board meeting, assuming we are keeping that commitment, too. But what I'm hopeful will occur is, you know, we're going to identify a group of individuals that understand the needs of the district, our stakeholders, our community members, work with them, as well as some support staff, to get through a realignment process. That needs to conclude before any election, period, whether it's the Vator is supported or any trustee election. Like, our goal is to get through that by November, so that we enter the next year's budget process with as close to a balanced budget as possible. Like, what I really want to do is to enter the 2025 legislative session with zero reliance or expectation that they're going to -- the state is going to release funds to AISD. And so-- And so, you know, we are mapping this out. It's going to require a significant lift, but at this point, you know, continuing to, to trim isn't going to get us to be able to cover the projected kind of gaps that we have. Now, on slide fifteen, what I'm endeavoring to show is the realized deficit for twenty-four, twenty-five while we're within the year. And the reason that things is important is because if you look back to last year, we started with a fifty-two million dollar deficit. We picked up some of that through interest earnings and through other things. And so at each point along the year, we had a different realized or projected end-of-year deficit. And so what I'm hoping to do here in this slide is kind of project out where I expect us to be as an organization with and without a Vader, right? And so May six, May sixteenth to June sixth, we put to be determined because we're going through that process now. If there are vacancies that can be eliminated, that would be a fixed cost reduction and we'd be able to count towards our deficit offset. The non-campus vacancy freeze period, again, open print superintendent approval only. The number of positions, as I said, you know, and the value of those are outside what Ed is considering. And so what I'd like to do is to freeze and then as we go through systematically approve. But just by freezing, we will be able to pick up the value of that FTE or that position not being filled over that period of time. And that is real dollars. I mean, that ends up being a significant amount to the tune of six-point-five million dollars. So again, that would be from June, from essentially the beginning of June all the way through November. And we can talk about what that would look like, but again, the goal is to just put real thought into every current vacancy that needs to be added. Monetized real estate holdings, I put a to be determined because a lot of those conversations need to occur in executive session because of what we're exploring. But I do want to acknowledge that I did hear from the board the desire to be creative, which is why monetize is the word that we're using, not fee simple, not lease. I mean, there are different things that we can do. We do have estimates of what that could look like, but I would prefer to get feedback from the trustees based, because what we're talking about, real assets. And, and these things, there's lots of them, right? There's little easements and right of ways, there's, you know, different parks that, uh, project, sorry, pocket parks that we sell or do a deal with or negotiate with the city of Austin. All those add up and so we just need to talk about it. And then the approval of a tax rate election, twenty million. The reason we're using twenty million is because we know at this point that if the copper pennies are produced, I mean, are, are approved, it will yield a little over forty million. And we know that based on where we are in kind of coming to an agreement with Education Austin, that the, the value of those investments is about half of the Vader. And so, and based on the feedback we got from the trustees and everybody saw a little pie chart, it talked about like what percent of the Vader should perhaps go to supporting the district. It was roughly fifty percent, not fifty percent of the value, but roughly fifty percent of the value. And so for, for us, you know, making sure that we acknowledge that if we pursue that, you know, it would, we would take credit for it in that fiscal year and every future fiscal year and that would be netted out and would help us for, on deficit budget and then whatever is retained would go towards fund balance. And then lastly, district contribution for self-insurance. This is kind of an acknowledgement that, you know, as a system, we build up a fund to pay for different things that occur as a function of insurance requirements. And so that, over time, that builds up and so you can draw that down. And so if there's a need for a one-time kind of injection to, to close this for this fiscal year, that is available as well. And so the way that we look at it here is at the end of next year, you know, I would say on the, um, on a conservative side, if no Vader, then we might be looking at a forty-five-point-five million dollar deficit. If we take account and do these things in this way, then it could be as small as twenty-five-point-five. That does not include any real estate holdings and no vacancy offsets between now and June sixth. And the other thing I want to point out is my expectation is that as we get through the realignment process, again, we are back to as close to possible balanced budget. So that we end to, we enter the twenty, the twenty-twenty-five legislative session without a tremendous amount of reliance on additional funding because we know how that worked out for us last time. And so this is really for this year. So if I went and projected out like what the next years would look like, you would see the deficit be back to zero. We would not be carrying a deficit moving forward because we would have done the hard work before the legislative session started and before the Vader was approved or not approved by our voters, if that is the will of the board. And so I'm going to pause there. I shared a lot, it represents a lot of work that's occurred and I'm very proud of the team. And, you know, I think we're, we have an awareness of a budget now that I don't know that we've ever had. And so I think that helps us make informed decisions. And if we have to do something painful, we understand, you know, how we got here and what other things we did that got us to this point. And so with that, I have the team here available to open any, answer any questions. Is there anything, Jacob, that Richy would like to add before I hand it over to the trustees?
Well, thank you, I would. We did want to also share the compensation agreement and I wanted to see if, she doesn't know this, so I apologize, but if Ms. Hosack could join us for a second and I'm going to share that. So we did receive a signed consultation agreement on the fourteenth. Let me share it. It's not working.
Yeah. And so for, for our families and, of course, committee members out there, consultation agreement. It's, it's an agreement that is, that is between the Education Austin and the administration. And so there are many of these. We work with Education Austin collaboratively over the course of the year. There are different things that are brought forward and we vet them, we test them, we kind of determine, you know, what's the best for both, both of us, what parties. And then if they move forward, they come to the board for final approval. And so there are many different types. During this time of year, we have a compensation consultation agreement. This happens every single year. And, and so what this represents is the end of a negotiation process. But it was collaborative and I do want to say, you know, I appreciate the acknowledgement of this kind of constraints that we're in. And so what the team is bringing up is the, as the agreement as it stands now.
So there are two parts to the compensation agreement for twenty-four, twenty-five. And the first part of that is looking at if a Vader election were to be called and if that Vader election passed in November twenty-two-four, then the parties would make market adjustments to our positions and employees listed in the compensation study that Ms. Hosack will be able to define more for us. And then in addition, many of our classified employees would be covered in that. But we would make a, a guarantee that for any classified employee in the district, that they will at least see an increase of twenty-five cents. So what that means is that if the market adjustment said that this employee would see zero because they're at market or somewhere between one and twenty-four cents, we will ensure that's at least twenty-five cents. So that every classified employee will see something.
Good evening, board. Just kind of a quick rundown of what a market adjustment looks like. This would not, this would be, not be done over time. This would be in one, in one motion, we would do all, all at the same time. I do know that the district has experienced market adjustments over a period of years. By the time you finish that process, you are now again out of market the next time. So we would want to do it all at once. The cost of these market adjustments, it is significant. It is about seventeen, we are estimating seventeen-point-eight million dollars with that extra twenty-five cent guarantee. The nice part of this is that it really is truly targeting the, the places that we needed and that we've talked about needing to make these adjustments to. I'll give you some examples. So for teachers and librarians, this is going to be the adjustment at the seven-year of experience mark and up. And so this is really boosting that if you recall some of the data that you've seen before, we are actually on market and doing quite well within our first five years of teaching. Once we hit about that seven-year mark, we fall off the map as far as being competitive with our surrounding districts. This would make that right and make us very competitive. Additionally, this would help create the, the space that we would need, for example, to bring, for example, our SLPs up to market and make, make sure that we are compensating them in a fair way and a competitive way. And some, some of our other related services to that matter. The, there is a breakdown of positions that we can certainly share with the board to, to let you know exactly how many employees, which positions, et cetera, and the dollar amount associated with those.
Brandy, sorry, Chief Hosack. Could you explain kind of the origin of the study itself?
Sure.
And kind of how that comes about?
Absolutely. It's been about three years since we have worked with TASB to conduct a compensation study. We, it is about the regular pace that we do that. You're supposed, you should be conducting those studies between three and five years. The market, especially in central Texas, is certainly a moving target. And we are in one of the most expensive areas, if not the most expensive area there is. So for us to maintain and be competitive, we have to, to keep pace with market. Our four-dollar per hour raise for our classified employees this last year, we are now the ones to chase in those, in those markets in many ways. We, so lots of those, of those positions are doing quite well and above market. There's an incredible amount of classified, classified employees and so we will need, there, you'll see a dollar amount that is, that is significant because of, of again, the, the amount of employees in the, in those positions. However, there are some in those positions that are well below market and need to be brought up. And so when we talk about going to market, we want to not only just meet it, but we want to be slightly above so that we are competitive for at least three more years. But it is, it is a, a contract with TASB that they went through our entire pay plan and have made those recommendations to us and were able to give us a cost out for those. Thank you. Dr. Rich was reminding me about, making sure I was clear about when staff would realize that, should we see a Vader that is authorized by, by voters and passes. So it would not, we would not know the outcome of that obviously until November. So we would not be able to make those adjustments until December. It would be retro back to the first contract date of the school year.
Thank you, Brandy. Chief Hosack.
Thank you so much for that information. And I just wanted to let the public know, so we were going to vote on approving the consultation agreement at this meeting. It was, however, we're not because we didn't have enough to, we just, you all just got this signed, correct? Okay.
It was on Tuesday, yes.
Okay, great, great. So, so that's helpful to know and I really appreciate the, the focus on, like, it's not a one-size-fits-all. You're actually looking at the, where we have the needs and tailoring the market adjustments to that. And I think that's super valuable. Trustees, do y'all have any questions or comments?
I have one.
Let me, Trustee Zapata and then Trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you for, for that update. On the classified, does that include the custodians and cafeteria people?
Yes, ma'am, it does.
And is that inclusive of full-time versus part-time?
Every employee.
Every, okay.
Every place. Unless it is, it is, for example, there are flat rates that we do, for example, summer work and some, some of our positions, but if they are an AIC employee, then yes, ma'am, they would realize that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wasn't going to ask this one originally, but Trustee Zapata just had it pop in my head. Would that include lunch monitors also?
So lunch monitors are at a flat rate. And so those are not FTEs really, those are part-time hourly workers. So that is a flat rate position. That is a great question.
Okay, thank you. The second question I had is about the retroactive adjustment. So if I were an employee, would I understand that to mean that my like December check would include that increase that would have happened for those previous months going back to the start of the contract date? And that's all going to be like on the December, January check if the Vader were approved?
Hypothetically speaking, it would be a very nice time to realize that increase. Yes, sir, it would come, go back all the way to the first duty day of, of the year.
Okay, that was it? Thank you.
Do any trustees have questions? Go for it, this is your time. Oh, was there another question about the Vader?
I have some questions, but David, go ahead. Thank you all for this and thank you all for the work you've been doing. I heard a little bit about it and I, I am glad that someone has gone line by line through our ginormous, humongous budget and thank you. It's, it's a responsibility and a way to be really good custodians of our funds. And I know it's taken a massive amount of effort from a whole lot of people and I just want to acknowledge that and, and thank you for that as we're making these hard decisions. And appreciate the transparency and the work because I think the harder the decisions get, the more transparent we need to be and the more we need to be in communication with our community. So thank you for that. I'd like to know if we can add the consultation agreement to board docs under the budget just so our community knows what's coming, if that's possible. Thank you. I appreciate the look at our self-insurance. I know we used it during COVID to give some budgets because our self-insurance is so healthy. So I really appreciate that as a one-time possibility and that really we don't feel the pain of that in the way that we have felt a lot of the other pains. So I appreciate you bringing that as a possibility. Thank you for that and I, I trust that you're being conservative with it, but thoughtful about it. So thank you for that. Really appreciate that as an option. I would love to go back to the slide that shows the twenty-nine million dollar savings. And I'd like to have a really clear understanding. Two meetings ago, we were talking about a thirty million dollar savings. We had a slide that kind of showed where it would come from. Is this just more detail about that thirty million dollar savings? Or did you find additional savings going line by line? Or is this just bringing that into better focus?
So it's, it's bringing it into better focus. I would tell you that the, the challenge that we had was the detail within the contracts. And when you go contract by contract, the available kind of reduction wasn't what we thought it originally could be, right? Because we were looking at, you know, hundreds and hundreds of, hundreds of contracts. And so we went line by line and evaluated each contract, you know, kind of the PO, you know, does it need to be terminated? Is it something to be renegotiated? Is it something where we're not burning what we typically would burn as far as use? And so when we got to that level, we realized that we couldn't, we couldn't expect to take as much as we had anticipated. And so, and then we also realized at that time that what we really needed to do is a lot of these costs are distributed across org, org, org by org by org and there's many, many orgs. And so I would say the difference is, is really, a lot of it is the number of other direct costs that are embedded within each org. A tightening of overtime and travel. An additional reduction in vacant positions. So previously we had forty-one, that went down to a little bit over thirty once we kind of got into the details of how that would actually work after reorg. That has now moved back to sixty, fifty-nine-point-seven because there, some positions are split funded and there's a whole bunch about that. But I do want to, trustee, president, I mean, trustee Boz will tell you, there are no additional working personnel included in that difference. And so, I mean, to be like hyper-transparent and that's really what it is. It's focus, it's recognizing that what we thought we could take in some of the larger contracts, we can't take in that way. And then finding other details within the, I mean, really the system itself at a line-by-line level. So that's what it was.
Okay, so I super appreciate that the work has been done, but my understanding from what I'm hearing is that we're still at the same amount of savings that we were at three weeks ago. Is that correct?
Correct.
We just know with more specificity exactly what that's going to be. So we haven't moved forward yet.
Correct.
On making more cuts.
So.
You're not bringing new cuts to us yet.
Well, I would say I'm bringing there.
Specific cuts.
Bringing, there's new cuts, so the, the, the list of cuts is, is different.
So not additional, not bigger cuts?
Not different value, correct.
Okay.
Yes, so the. Yeah, so the challenge that we had is I did task the team with identifying additional $15 million in cuts. Once we began to to really figure out how you could pull that out of the system in the time that we had, it became clear that it couldn't be done unless you went like down to the item level. And so then it began to build back up. And what we decided to do was to maintain, you know, our commitment to preserve the classroom, not wanting to add any additional reductions in cost that would impact someone who's currently like working right now. And also acknowledging that, as I said before, the trims to from thirty thirty million to forty five million is where you get away from trims, and you have to think about how you do business. That's that, I think, is the the best way to put it. And so I'm still gonna push to to increase that number, but I feel very confident that we have thirty over the next period of time. I want to try to see if we can get that number higher. But really, the work that's gonna be required is the back to balance budget from July to November, which is gonna rethink, I mean, how we operate as an organization. Like, that's the work. And I was fearful of doing that without getting community voice, without going through a a different process.
Appreciate it.
And so the offsets that that I think we've identified allows allow us to protect ourselves, reestablish how we operate and do it all before we move into the legislative session. And then my expectation is that after we move through the realignment process, when you start fiscal year twenty five, twenty six, you're starting from a balanced budget, which reduces our exposure in the legislative session, which is really what we needed to do.
What we need to do. Thank you. Okay, I have another question here. The unallocated budget, I assume, is money that sometimes we need? Or is it money that we never get around to spending? Like, what risk are we putting ourselves in, counting that as zero?
So there are. So I guess the best way is is that some of these costs are tied to things that are probably best discussed in the executive session.
Happy to do that.
But generally speaking, there are things that can't be withdrawn org by org. They're taking out of the whole system.
Okay.
And so when I show the granularity org by org, I can tell you this, this, and this. But there are other things that are global. So it's a combination of those things. I I know exactly
But it's not putting us at risk for doing
Oh, no, no.
Okay, thank you.
No, no.
Okay, I would love to hear more about that
No, I'm happy.
In a safe way. Thank you. And then I know we we see when we look at our budgets over time, we see year after year after year that we actually spend less than we budget, that our deficits are smaller than we think they're going to be. By going line by line, by doing this, are we losing some of that margin that we usually have? Do we need to expect a kind of a smaller amount of this magic savings that kind of happen every year?
You know, I I think the majority of the savings that we identify are offsets, you know, as Ed will say, it's it's based on vacancy savings. But those vacancy savings are not what we're talking about here, right? So, I mean, I'm gonna kind of go on a limb here. But, you know, we we budget, assuming a two percent. Well, they take a two percent vacancy savings, right? And that's what's applied. When you look at the budget, you see the dollars sit there, and it's in the tens of millions. What we're talking about vacancy savings here, they were not included in that. And so I would say that we have to get better about operating to our budget. I will tell you that the previous system didn't support good behavior because it allowed us to actually create cost codes that could run negative balances. And so what happened is you are within an org. I mean, I was. I remember doing this. You have a negative balance, and then I go and I do a call it BCR, budget change request, and I move one dollar amount to another line item, all within an org, right? Now, with ERP and with the controller putting in place, you can't do that. And so the controls around how you operate are are now getting to a point where we should not have to rely on these huge, you know, I would say contingencies, for lack of a better word. We should be able to make them manageable, right? It's the same same approach you would take in a large comprehensive bond. Like in twenty twenty two, we were very precise. In twenty thirteen, we weren't because we didn't know how. Say we didn't know. We didn't have the ability to budget in that way.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
That's like a long winded way.
No, I get that. Yeah, I I get that. Thank you. That's very helpful to know. And then one more question. I see a lot of things looking at, you know, we are going. You're going to be bringing us a deficit budget with, you know, an indeterminate but very large number again. We had a deficit budget of $52 million that you brought to us last year. We talked a lot when we adopted that budget about being really aggressive and transparent and and early and often about talking about what those savings would be, both with the board and with our community. That was one of the conditions under which I voted for that deficit budget and felt confident doing that. And those conversations didn't happen for a long, long time. And I think if we are going to do this yet again, and we see this plan, I would like something at every single meeting about where we are in that plan. And I would like to just put that on our agenda now and make sure that we are talking about it every single time we're together here and just having some. It doesn't need to be belabored. It doesn't need to be long, but for the board, for the community, and for the people who work for the district, just making sure that we're doing that. Because last time, I don't feel like we did do that.
Yeah. I I agree. I think that I honestly feel, you know, keeping it in the superintendent's report and just calendaring out is a way to do it.
I'm great with that.
And and the reason I would say that is because I think sometimes we're working. And, you know, I can only like, things are happening within a day or two that I need to present to the board, and this allows me to do it. When we move it to an agenda item, it's a very different process. So that that will help me. And I absolutely agree. I mean, the work that we're proposing to do at the end of July through November, that's gonna be heavy work. Like, that's gonna be a lot. And so it's absolutely important that we update our community and bring community along and the board. And so, no, I'm happy to do that. And I would make that an expectation of us, for sure.
Thank you. And I'm happy with it being the superintendent's report. And then we just ask that as soon as the documents are ready, that they go into board docs, so people have that record. And I I understand the the nimbleness and what it takes to get that to us two weeks ahead of time. So thank you for that. I appreciate that. That's it from me.
Trustee Kaufman.
Yes, thank you for the detailed report. Are there any updated thoughts or ideas on the potential of including a sunset provision in the VADER? Somehow making a commitment to our community that this will not be a permanent tax that has an escalating percentage of their tax revenues being sent to the state general fund? A commitment of some kind to reduce the tax rate in two to four years if the state does not turn the copper pennies into golden pennies or doesn't reform the recapture system. I know we talked about it last week, and I was wondering if there's any further thoughts or insight into that.
I mean, so trustee Kaufman, I certainly can provide some some thoughts around it. I I guess I would ask your colleagues. Y'all would be the ones to kind of
Colleagues?
Any comments on that?
Well, I have a question about that. Are you seeking to have that in the ballot language or seeking it to have have it be a commitment?
Either way, I I think having it in the ballot language would be more of a binding commitment.
Is that I mean, is that allowed or not allowed? Okay, our attorney is saying that's not allowed. So I would just want to clarify that.
I just somehow to be able to let people know that we're not asking for a permanent donation to the state general fund.
One option might be to commit to reviewing it and say, well, like, put it, you know, put it on the calendar to review, you know, every biennium or or something like that, so that it's required to come back to the board for consideration. I I guess maybe that's a way to do it.
President Foster, you're dying to talk. I don't know. I can just feel the energy.
I don't know if anyone knows my opinion about the VADER. No, I I think trustee Kaufman's suggestion is a really, really good one. And it could perhaps mitigate some of the some of the challenge of this. And it would probably be the only way I'd come anywhere near supporting a VADER.
So so to get clarity on what you were just saying, would you want to see, like, when we, if and when we pass a resolution to put this VADER on the ballot, you would want it to say that we would definitely sunset it by a certain date? Or that we would do a review every
Yeah, I I think probably bear some more thought and consideration as to what it would exactly look like to think about sunsetting it. I don't know if we would build in thresholds where if the value proposition got to a certain point, we would then automatically sunset it, or if we say we want to agree to or require ourselves to review it. I don't know what that would look like yet.
Thank you. Trustees, any other comments on this? Okay. Oh, yes, trustee Hunter.
So I want to check with Ms. Medea. You're saying it can't be in ballot language, right?
Correct.
And if we put it in a what's the language? Not proposition. Resolution, thank you. In a resolution.
You can put it anywhere else, just not the ballot language.
I guess I'm asking, like, this board will not look like this always, right? So how how do you ensure that that occurs? Because Granny Ray is coming to my mind. Basically, what it is because of the system that we're in is what she would call fattening frogs for snakes, right? You're not fattening the frog for yourself. You fattened the frog, the snake eats it. And so that's basically what we're doing.
I thought you were born in Texas.
Never heard it, but like it. I like it.
Well, I mean, but that's that's essentially what we're doing, right? So my question is, how do we ensure that the the boards that come behind us will? I mean, they could just be like, hey.
Maybe you really can't.
Yeah, so.
But I think it's important to also think about the fact that at the point at which it's, you know, it's gonna be on the November ballot. So your new board is, you know, will be on the November ballot. So this board can achieve that messaging for sure. But what actually is gonna happen, you know, and also the legislature is gonna meet in in twenty twenty five as well. So there's a lot of unknowns in what's gonna happen. But this board can set that as a as an ideal and set that as an expectation. But what happens in the future, of course, we cannot 100% predict or guarantee.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just let me if we're done with when we're done with VADER.
I just want to have one clarifying. So if we don't pass a VADER, what does that mean for compensation?
So, I mean, that's a really great clarifying clarifying question. The as as negotiated with Education Austin, the market adjustments are tied to a VADER. And I think it's an acknowledgement of just the crisis that we're in, you know, that to achieve what was proposed would require cutting into things that are not aligned with our values. And to go through this next step would be required before any additional funds would be available to cover that because it'd be covering the forty five or fifty million plus the seventeen. And and I think what, to be very clear, they're tied together.
And did we? And maybe you've talked about this already tonight, but could you talk a little bit about possibly bringing a like two versions of the budget? I mean, I know that you said, hey, here's the with VADER and without. Is that just the difference? It's like we have more deficit, or would there be actual structural changes if the VADER doesn't pass?
So so structural changes, when you say structural changes, President Singh, are you referring to like? I mean, I would say that the approaches and strategies that we use would be more aggressive. Because if 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 the VADER were to be successful, then the deficit budget we would be looking to offset to get to a balanced budget would be less, right? And if we that doesn't pass, then the effort required by this organization to get to a balanced budget prior going to going into legislative session would be the difference. And so it would be at least a $20 million adjustment in our fixed and operating costs. Minimum. Now, I'm not. I'm not saying that we couldn't offset some of that by being more aggressive with our other strategies. But generally speaking, that would be a minimum impact. And and I I guess the only thing I would share is the 30 million was difficult. It's gonna have to be a realignment. Like, it's gonna have to be different structure within AISD in order to get to these numbers.
Okay, that's helpful. And then, you know, I would think that like, do we have the ability to do projections on how many staff we might lose if we don't have a compensation increase? Are there any calculations we could do based on historical data or other?
Be incredibly hard to predict that. I can tell you that some of these positions range anywhere between eighty three percent of market up to, you know, into the nineties. None of that is is good news. And so this is this is one of one of those moments that that this is really certainly a a cost to to make it right for for our employees who have been below market for some time. I'm especially leaning in on those on our teachers with with years of experience here. And so that is one of the commitments that we've made is is how can we ensure that we are retaining teachers that have some experience to them? And so I I would be nervous to make a projection on that. But it would. It would certainly be very hard to to continue.
And do we have a sense, and this might be going a little bit into the weeds, but do we have a sense of what would be worse? This sounds terrible, but what would be worse for our teachers? Would it be worse to not increase compensation? Or would it be worse to take away planning periods or increase class sizes? Like, do we have? Do we know? And do we have a way of finding that out?
Trustee Singh, I think that we certainly have feedback from surveys and whatnot about about what teachers need right now. And to be very fair, yes, it's compensation, but right now it's also support. And so those are the things that that are we hear very, very clearly. We don't. We don't ask the question, how would you feel about, you know, losing planning time? But but I can guarantee what that feedback will be because really, as part of support is about time. And so it is a real thing that we are absolutely going to have to, or at some point on this trajectory. But I think that, again, this is one of those I don't want to speak for our teachers. But but it's a both and, and it's really hard to, if you if you ask me, would you rather have money or time at this point in the game with the with how hard teaching is and how much is on their plates? I'm I'm gonna just make an assumption on time. But at the same time, I have a really hard time looking at our teachers with with years of experience and saying, but you are so far below your peers. It it is certainly a rock and a hard place.
Well, I really appreciate the thoughtfulness and the plan to really have a a budget committee of some sort, thinking through what these changes might be. I mean, I think that's what is that kind of what you were hinting at earlier about for next year?
Yes, I think that the the strategy is gonna have to be thinking about how do we work differently opposed to just cutting. I think I think I think we're at a point now, and maybe we should have been here years ago, but at the end of the day, you know, you were operating in the way that we were kind of, we have been for a long time. And I I just don't know how you can get to where we need to get without just rethinking just workflows, you know? How do we really leverage the system to do what we needed to do for students and staff? When you do it piece by piece, it's challenging. And I think we've 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 done a lot of work. I think the next big steps are gonna be us working through that. And then also understanding kind of where is that balance between how far do you? What do you lose? And how how does that adversely impact our schools? And then at what point does the first thing that impacts schools, you know, come forward? And we've been really intentional about staying away from schools in in our classrooms. And so, yes, but that is the work that we're describing. It's gonna be difficult, but it's necessary. And I think we have to do it before we start the next budgeting process.
For sure. Thank you. All right, let me get trustee Kaufman first and then Foster.
Okay, so I don't have a Granny Ray, but I have Chad GPT to help me come up with the saying. So Chad GPT says, it's easier to catch a frog with a net in a clear pond. And when everyone stirs the pot, the frogs do taste better. So in the spirit of like transparency and collaboration.
Those weren't as good as Granny.
Chad GPT will never replace Granny Ray. But I do. I just want to thank you for that detailed review. detailed review of the budget reductions, department by department. I think it's really important to kind of see how it's spread across the organization. I appreciate that. And I have no doubt that this has been a very thoughtful and deliberate and strategic process, not an across-the-board cut and not just a blind slashing to cut costs without paying attention to the impact. I also have no doubt that it has been a difficult and a painful process, and that there will be critics of every decision that you make, with some people asking, why did you cut that? And other people asking, why you didn't cut that. So I want to thank you for being open to feedback and constructive criticism from staff, community, and from this trustee, particularly regarding transparency, engagement, and communication. I especially want to thank you for taking time, time that you really don't have available, to listen compassionately to people who feel that they have been hurt and are ignored in this process, or that their department was hurt, or that the students they serve will be hurt. Emotions are a subjective experience, and you can't argue people out of their feelings, but you can listen to them. And thank you for doing that. As you proceed with the impossible task of balancing the budget without affecting the quality of education for our students, I trust that you will use the feedback you receive to improve the process for making cuts, and perhaps more importantly, for communicating about those cuts. I also trust that you will continue setting expectations for staff regarding the district values of meaningful engagement of all voices as we collaborate, a culture of respect, transparency, and data-informed decision-making, and engaging our employees and inviting their collaboration to make AISD a great place to work. No matter how good a process is, it can always be improved by listening to the people most invested in the decisions. So thank you.
Trustees, the partner.
Well, I just want to be clear. So what we heard tonight on this, does that mean that we were not, you said we're trying to stay away as much from campuses. Does that mean that there aren't going to be any cuts from campuses?
So for the goal, and currently as it stands right now, the campus-based staff, planning, resource allocations, all that has remained intact. We have not touched it.
Okay.
All the cuts, all that we've identified are central office or non-campus-based staff. And the reason I want to say non-campus-based staff is because, you know, there are cost-reduction strategies in the service center. There are cost-reduction strategies in other parts of the organization that are not in this building, but they're not at our schools. And so, but I also want to be very, very clear, you know, every single person in this building, every single position serves a purpose. Like, there is a role. And so, and I will say this, so I'm blue in the face, you know, every person is an educator. I mean, and I think what we're trying to do is to keep the impact as far away as possible, but acknowledge that the bigger that it gets, the closer that we get to the classroom. And so we're desperately trying to get through this budget cycle without encroaching on our classrooms, which will allow us to do the very difficult work of realigning the system within AISD. And I think only when we've done that can you begin to have a conversation around, you know, what may need to be adjusted in the schools. Like, I just, I do not want the schools to be anywhere near the first, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth thing that we do. So that's how I would describe it.
Okay. All right. Well, because I know one of the things that has come up repeatedly is, you know, when we did assignments of custodians based on square footage, if that was going to be revisited, or has been looked at at all.
So I was the person that oversaw that, my previous role. And that was, you know, in an effort to do a couple of things. One was to bring and centralize custodial support. When the pandemic occurred, what we realized was that our ability to move and support all of our campus was very difficult to accomplish, meaning that if you have an elementary school that has three custodians, and you have a high school down the road that has 18 custodians, I did not, as the chief operations officer, have the ability or the authority to have that custodian move to that campus. So the first thing we did was we centralized the work, which allowed us to do a lot of different things. And we put parameters around that, and I can talk about that in a moment. The other thing that we did is we looked at how efficient were we? At the time, we were in the lowest quartile when evaluated against every other urban school district, meaning that we weren't as efficient as we could be. So we attempted to do, and again, I think this is an opportunity to review it, but we actually used funds from the pandemic, ESER and otherwise, to actually provide additional resources. Like, there was a period of time where we only had, I think, like, 12 automated scrubbers within the district. Now every school has one, right? And we weren't able to purchase that until we got the funds through ESER that were tied to the pandemic. And so we felt at the time that we had a strategy that would allow us to provide the supports to reduce the ratio. I do know that we've looked at different ways to calculate it. You know, some schools have large, open areas that they essentially serve as a cafeteria and a lunchroom. In previous years, maybe that wasn't considered as part of, like, cleaning space. So I would tell you, at this point, we're not adjusting the ratios. Now, as you move forward with the work that's going to occur in late summer, early fall, that may be an area of exploration, but I can tell you, that's only going to add cost.
Right.
And that's okay. I mean, we need to do what's appropriate and what's needed, but that's where we are in the process.
Okay. Well, as long as it's looked at later, I think it's important, because when people are sick, it just leaves so much work for one person to do, you know? So just to take care of the human people that are working for us and do an excellent job. I have yet to enter a school that was dirty. They are all spectacular.
The fabric of this organization, they're incredible. And point of privilege, my elementary school, I couldn't be there with Eva today at her retirement, but my elementary school custodian, who took care of me when I was in elementary school, is retiring this year. She was at Up House. That's pretty awesome. So we're going to, you know, I'm going to embarrass her, I'm sure, at the retirement party. But no, so I do want to, I mean, it's important, I think, to look at all systems. It's not lost on me, and I, but I did want you to know where we are with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, there's kind of these difficult moments when one of the things we have to do is express gratitude. And I really appreciate Trustee Coffin for that. And when I'm observing you all do this work, one of the things that I'm deeply appreciative of is the ways in which the individual units, finance, talent, other folks are kind of working together to have a sort of comprehensive picture that results in really meaningful work. So what I'm seeing is a silver lining where, I mean, we can use the cold term efficiency, but we're going to get stronger through this. I really do think that. I'm appreciative of that. Trustee Boswell, this is more praise, I guess. Trustee Boswell asked that the consultation agreement go onto board docs? And it's already there. So Jacob, you were like multitasking as you were. I don't know how, but it's already here, and I appreciate that. But I wanted to ask a little bit more. And I also want to thank Education Austin for clearly working with you all and working through this. And, you know, there seems to be a communal recognition of the crisis that we're in that goes to the depths of, you know, our teachers showing that they're in with us through their leadership in at Austin. So I really appreciate that. When you talked about the contingency, if, you know, so there's a market adjustment if Vader. And by the way, another thing I appreciated was a nuance in the conversation where part of the reasoning for market adjustment is the leveraging of talent, that this is a specific potential loss area, and that the market adjustment almost has a leveraged effect of retaining really good people that we could otherwise lose. We don't want to be like the districts across Texas that continually are just losing their folks year in, year out. And you all are switching that around, and it's in part through this really deep nuanced work. So thank you for the market adjustment approach. And there was one thing, though, that in your agreement, in the consultation agreement between at Austin and the district, the contingency, if the Vader doesn't pass, that there's actually more to it there. What happens if the Vader doesn't pass?
Thank you, Trustee Foster. Yes, sir. If the Vader does not pass, or if it is not authorized, the contingency is that what we are able to sustain is a one-time payment to employees. And this was negotiated heavily and talked about heavily. It would be a one-time $500 payment to employees also in December, because we would need to know the outcome of Vader. But it would be $500 to all full-time, regular, active employees. That is what we're able to sustain. That comes at still a $5 million ballpark cost that we would still need to find and absorb into that budget. But it is a one-time, so it's not a recurring cost that we would need to realize year over year.
And for me, it goes against, you know, a general principle I hold around compensation. I don't like one-times, because I often feel like they're kind of a trick, you know? Because they go away, because they're one-time. And at the same time, here we are, we're at a point when many of our sort of boundaries are being pushed as we try to figure out the best way to go. So having heard at Austin sign on to this, and then clearly you all feel like it's a good way to go as a sort of stopgap or fallback, I appreciate that. And $5 million is not a small amount, but it's something. So, yeah, thank you for that.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you, team. You all did a really good presentation, and thanks for the hard work. Appreciate it. All right. So we will now move to public testimony for items on the consent agenda. Tonight, we have two people who left a recorded message with, and we have no one for in-person testimony. So we will now play the recorded messages for the public.
Hello, Madam President, trustees, and superintendent. My name is Robert Kibbe. I'm calling on item 12.2, changing the name to Mr. Connor, Jason Connor Music Room. Mr. Connor spent many years at Langford Elementary, helping our kids and dedicating his life, literally his life, to Langford Elementary School. He passed away shortly after he retired. I'm asking you to please, out of the request of the school and the community, and change it. Thank you. One last thing. Please get our kids away from third-world schools. Bring Mendez back into AISD. Thank you. Y'all have a great day.
Hi, my name is David Luna, and I'm a parent of a second grader in East Austin. I wanted to call today and comment on item 6.2 that's being brought up today. I just wanted to urge the board to consider these new testing assessments when it comes to this MAP program. The emphasis on testing five, six, and seven-year-olds, I think, is completely wrong. The frequent testing causes stress and anxiety for these young kids. I've had my child come home in tears before. What lessons are we providing these young children with these experiences? Another thing this MAP doesn't take into account is the diverse backgrounds of learning styles and disadvantages that some of these students have, especially in the time of this budget crisis. The cost of implementing this app is substantial and a burden to our limited funds that we already have. Again, I just want to urge the board to please look into this and disallow the practice of MAP. Thank you.
All right. So that concludes the public testimony. Trustees, are there any questions or clarifications? All right. So thank you. And as a reminder, please feel free to share any general comments or questions on non-voting items with the board by email at trustees@austinisd.org. All right. So our next item is part of our commitment to discuss student achievement. We have a presentation on the, on Constraints 4.3 and 5, which is the culture of respect and customer service. So tonight's discussion on our constraint has been recorded, and can be found on Agenda Item 6.1 on Board Docs for all watching at home. Our time during this meeting will be an opportunity for trustees to ask any questions of our superintendent and staff. Before we ask questions, we need to confirm that our monitoring report is complete. So does anyone have any evidence that the elements of an effective monitoring report are not present? All right. So since everyone agrees that the requirement elements, required elements are present, we will turn the floor to Superintendent Segura for any kind of presentation you'd like.
Paul, I'll hand it over to Jacob Reach, Chief of Government Relations and Board Services. We have a team here to answer any questions that the board may have over the presentation or data provided in the backup.
Thank you so much. And I'm going to ask a foreign partner, Mr. Kevin Hazel from Panorama Survey, could also join me. And yes, this is the same Mr. Hazel who you watched in the video. So now you get to see him in person. So quickly, I do want to let our public and our board know that our surveys are available for review on our Panorama dashboard. Possibly the easiest way to get to them is to search Panorama Survey in our search on AISD. But you can also go to Departments and then Research, and then it's under Panorama Surveys. And then by clicking on that survey results, you can see the information for our staff survey, our student survey, our family survey, and new for this year. We also did a survey that was similar but somewhat different for central office staff. And so that's available for the first time online as well. So as you may have seen on the video and the presentation that Mr. Hazel provided, we did see some growth in the climate subsection, which is what's used on our scorecard. Although we did not meet the goals that we had for our scorecard, we did see either they stayed the same or they grew, depending on the group, although they did not meet the goals. But as he really detailed in his presentation, there's a lot of bright spots across the district, a lot of good work happening at campuses. One thing I want to mention, while survey response rate is only a very small part, I am a believer that when people don't have strong opinions, they're maybe less likely to respond to a survey. And we want people to have strong, positive opinions. We want them to feel, I need to go let the district know how you're doing. Sometimes that's good, sometimes it's not good, and we need to learn from that. But we had some great bright spots on our survey for our students and for our staff. And so, really quickly, I just want to mention for some of our schools and their student response rates, Gus Garcia Youngman's Leadership Academy not only had 100% of all students, they did it in like three days of the survey opening. We also had Casey Elementary, Campbell Elementary, Ortega, Bear Creek, Ridgetop, Mills, Brentwood, all above 95%. So a good range of schools, and really proud of them getting that done. We also had really good increase in our staff survey participation across the board this year. We have been low, and we did see stronger responses. And when you go and look at the year-over-year results, while there are some examples of some indicators going down, there's also a lot of staff responses that show stronger climate, stronger support from their campus and from the district. And a lot of those indicators that we normally look at closely, we saw some good positive results on that. So we're excited about that as well. But I'd like to open it up to any question, or I guess, Mr. Hazel, you have any other aha's or anything else that we should add?
No, I think the staff survey was definitely a big bright spot. We also saw some great gains in the family survey as well. Also, particularly around our emergent bilingual students in secondary, we saw that they were ahead of the sixth through 12th grade average for the district in sense of belonging and rigorous expectations in particular. And also, we saw that our Asian students across both grade bands were also well above the district average when we were looking across by race and ethnicity.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, Trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you. So I guess I wanted to call attention to the, some of the information that's on Slide 15. I appreciated your explanation, Dr. Reech, about what you deduced based on the response rate and what that indicated about campus climate. But when I looked at the specific campus data, I was troubled. I mean, I looked at three, you know, I looked at the high schools in particular. And when I And when I looked at three high schools that are all on the East Side, I saw a total of 92 responses from three high schools. And there was one of those three high schools, without getting specific, where there was only one student out of the entire student body that had completed the survey. And so I guess I just, I have a lot of difficulty with drawing a conclusion that that is an indication of a positive, healthy school climate when you have one student out of hundreds that have taken this survey. And when I go to another high school in another part of town, there's like 1,300 students that have taken this climate survey. So to use the stems, why do the gaps in these student groups exist? Or what is the understanding of the administration as to why there's such a disparate response across campuses?
Well, with students, I do think that there's some differences with staff and families. Because with students, what we know is for these campuses that I mentioned that were above 95%, they made intentional effort to provide students the opportunity to complete the survey. And I'll just share, Garcia, again, because I thought they had a really great idea. The principal was asking staff last year, you know, how do we ensure all students take this? And their PE teacher said, well, PE is the one thing that every student takes across the board, so why don't I take them? And, you know, one day, we'll do the survey with them. That's how they got to 100%. You know, a simple solution that just worked when the whole campus got together and talked about ideas. So I do believe that a big part of it is campus intention to get those results with students. I think with staff and families, it's, again, those who have strong opinions want to respond. And those who maybe not, do not have such a strong opinion, may not be as quick to want to respond, and that's telling to me as well. But with the campuses, so one thing that we do is when we look through campus results, we also look through the response rate. And that's something that our EDs will then go discuss with our principals at the campus. I will, I'll call out one campus since they did so well, but we're in our third year of doing this. And three years ago, Ridgetop's response rate was not as strong for their students. And so their ED actually worked with them on that plan, and as part of their campus improvement planning, they said that one thing we need is better results on family engagement. So we're going to ensure that we set those goals for our surveys. And that's something that they did with their ED and did with their campus CAC to really make a priority out of providing opportunities for students, staff, and families to respond for their surveys. And it's reflected in their percentages. So I think having a plan is a big part of it. And then it's up to us to go work with our campus to figure out, you know, well, what are those strategies we can put in place to help support you when we go through this? But I, like you, you know, I see a low response rate as an indicator of something that we do need to look more closely at, and that we do need to strategize around how do we help support that.
Thank you. I appreciate the specific example of how support was provided to a campus, and I hope that that can become systematized because I wonder where that support was on the campuses where the response rate was so low. And just an additional wondering, we're having this discussion about our budget, and the administration was kind enough to provide a list of contracts and amounts. And benevolent, as I'm sure Panorama is, this is not a service that is provided for free. And so when there's such a low response rate, I just, and I don't expect an answer, but I think about fiscal responsibility and responsible management of what we're getting from these contracts that we're engaging in. So that's it, but thank you.
All right. Thank you. Trustees, any other questions or comments on this? All right. Well, thank you all very much. We appreciate it. And so now we have to, I believe we have to vote on this, so. At this point, I will entertain a motion for the acceptance of this monitoring report. So Secretary Boswell, do we have a motion to accept the report?
Yes, I move to accept the report.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, trustees, on this item? All right, so, oh, yes.
I'm just, I didn't ask questions because I didn't see that this was posted at the time of the deadline for our pre-board meeting questions, but I didn't hear anything about strategies or steps to improve this outcome for our students. Did I miss that, or was it? Because I cannot vote for this, for accepting this if it didn't include the strategies for how we're going to improve student belonging or the other indicators.
Okay. So does the administration have any comments on that?
No, I think that, you know, generally speaking, you know, the way that this was, I would say, presented was similar to how we presented, like the audit and some others, where we allow the partner to do it. But I do agree with you, the strategies to how to address either increasing the percentages of participation or moving the number in any way, those are really embedded in our overall strategies and initiatives as a district. So, you know, I guess I do agree with you that in the same way that we have in others, it's not like that. And I think that's, you know, an area of improvement for sure.
I will say one thing in terms of, for high school participation. One school last year that did some great work, they had a student advisor that developed a student-led campus improvement goal, Navarro High School. They're responding at about 40%, which is 10% over the high school average overall. So I think that's a good testament to the more, we encourage campuses to have CIP goals and even student-led CIP goals at the high school could be a really good lever for encouraging more engagement.
Mr. Hazel, could you briefly mention about how when campuses review their results, they can also review the strategies and best practices that are aligned with some of those categories?
Yeah, definitely. So Panorama, we do a lot more than just our stakeholder surveys. We also do PBIS and MTSS implementation. And we also work with you all through the Mesa Cloud On-Time Graduation component that counselors use. And as part of our tools is a playbook of over 800 evidence-based strategies that spread across all MTSS tiers and include culture and climate. We actually believe that culture and climate and understanding perspectives across students, staff, and family is critical to kind of creating a healthy system in MTSS as well. So some of the, like, strategies are around improving sense of belonging or climate. And so teachers and principals can go right into the platform and say, identify a question or a topic area that they want to address, and really quickly identify a handful of strategies that align to that goal. And it has kind of all, everything you would need in order to implement that strategy.
Thank you.
I certainly don't want to put any additional work or demands on our administration, but I am concerned that this is a constraint, and it's a very important thing we know for both student attendance and for retention of students in school and for outcomes that they feel a sense of belonging and that they feel positive about their school. So, you know, if I didn't know our school leadership team and their commitment to creating a positive environment and engaging students, then I wouldn't have serious questions about why, you know, a vendor, no matter how well-meaning, was, why we're outsourcing such an important thing to a vendor, to say that, well, they're going to provide the strategies and our own team isn't going to provide their strategies and what, how they're using that tool to achieve these things. So I'm very, I'm just confused of why this, why this presentation is not being done by our school leadership team. And so I will not be able to vote in support of this.
Thank you. So, yes, Trustee Zapata.
Yes, I do.
I'm sorry. Let's do Trustee Zapata and then Hunter.
I too cannot support this report as well for the same reason. So if it's, we're talking about culture and environment, right? And we're trying to bring a systemic process for the whole district. I would think that's a non-negotiable for creating a culture through our district. So how each campus decides to do that, you know, where's the accountability? So I'm also not supporting the report. Thank you. Cannot vote on this.
Oh, wait. I think, Trustee Hunter, you were going to say?
I've had a question for, oh, I have a question for the superintendent, just to make sure that I'm understanding what's going on. So since this is a report, progress monitoring, and a report, the one thing that I didn't see, and if I missed it, please show me where it is, when we see that, we, that, I didn't really see where it's like, people aren't, like, students are happy or they're not happy, and here's the root cause analysis of how we're going to attack that, or this is why we see this, or anything like that, that I'm, because was that in the video? Or did I miss that?
So I think, no, you did not miss it. I think what we're struggling with here is historically how we presented goal-progress measures and constraint-progress measures, and kind of the fact that this is a report that we received from my partner and not one that's kind of developed internally, like, with special education, you know, evaluation that is totally within the administration. And so, you know, I think, you know, that your point is well-taken, and I think that a more robust representation would have included strategies that I know we're undertaking now, and certainly, you know, Lakeisha, you know, or others can probably speak to what we've done. I do know that as a leadership team, we work closely with Jacob and really the superintendent's office to figure out, okay, why are we not seeing the responses the way that we would expect to see them? But for us, like, taking this information and helping us understand how to improve the overall system is what's helpful. You know, because there are things that we learn from this. We correlate it to, you know, what are we hearing about in elementary school that we know is struggling, or we're starting to get responses about, or what are we hearing about this? Like, getting, this is incredibly helpful as we plan larger initiatives. And culture and climate is certainly one that we take seriously, and I think you've demonstrated different initiatives along that path. So I guess as you move forward, I'll need to understand precisely how to better respond to this specific constraint-progress measure. Because what I heard from Trustee Gonzalez was the, you know, the response on how to increase participation. And then, you know, perhaps the response in monitoring constraint, monitoring report would be how to improve climate and culture.
Right.
And I think the climate and culture piece, it weaves across multiple initiatives, right? One of them, we just talked about, compensation. And so I think there's a lot of work to do specifically around this one, but you're right, specifically, it was not included in that way.
So I just, I want to offer, like you saying, you guys have got some lessons learned. Do you feel like it would be beneficial for staff to come and say, we've looked at this, here are some things that we plan on moving forward? I think that would maybe complete the, it wouldn't close the loop, but it would sure get those points a little bit closer together.
Yeah, I think Lakeisha, our Assistant Superintendent of Elementary School Leadership, she's integral to the work. She can definitely share the strategies they've used in elementary.
Good evening, President Seing, Board of Trustees. So we do actually use the Panorama survey on a very regular basis. So part of the executive director coaching cycle with our principals at the beginning, middle, and end of the year entails reviewing their Panorama data and the plans that they have in response to it. And so that's where we are seeing an increase in some of the participation rates, is because there is a plan as to how do we get more of our staff members and students engaged in the survey. We are even sharing in principals' meetings. So we have principals that do have strong results and strong participation, and we have them share that out with the rest of the group. We also have our administrators unpack their data with their staff in many different forms. Some do it whole group, some do it during PLCs, and then they have coaching sessions with their executive directors around the data. One point of learning for us is to take that strategy to students at elementary, and so have some student-focused groups that are, that can inform us as to why they are responding, especially around the areas of belonging. We also have culture and climate plans. I know a couple of meetings ago, Dr. Kaufman referenced submitting the plan, and we never revisit it. And that has been a practice in the past, but we have been very intentional now about having principals reflect, especially if we see, we see some data points of concern, right? And so it's like, so if your plan is this, but we're seeing this student group isn't doing well, then what revisions do we need to make to your culture and climate plan? And a lot of that information does come around, come from the Panorama survey.
Thank you.
So trustees, where do we, did anybody else have a comment that they wanted to make? Okay, go for it.
So first, I think, Trustee Hunter, thanks for the save. With allergies killing you, you're, by having Dr. Lakeisha, Ms. Reinx, come forward, that, I mean, I think that helps for what we've all just had lifted up for us by Trustee Kaufman, that we have this responsibility to have the both and, like, here's the data, and then here's like the how we're moving forward. So I think we have a clear picture of how to move forward in that, in that little area. And thanks for coming up, like, on the spot. I'm really grateful to Trustee Gonzalez for, you know, this is a lot of data, right? And it's actually really nicely laid out, and it's great to see. And before the meeting, some of us were trying to find the response rate by campus. I knew it was there, couldn't find it in the moment, and promptly forgot. And then Trustee Gonzalez lifted it up, and I did find it. And one of the things, from a trustee's standpoint, there's so much that's so complicated, and yet every once in a while, you see things that, for me, become low-hanging fruit because the differences campus to campus are so stark that it sounds like there's an opportunity. We have a similar space where it's done really well, and we have a space where it's not happening. So we had response rates in the high schools that went from like 13 out of all the kids to 1,000, whatever, whatever. That's cuckoo. Like, you know, so clear area for improvement, and part of our capacity to do the job well, it's got to include robust data. And what Trustee Gonzalez lifted up is that we don't have robust data because we have specific campuses where the response rates, and with deference in respect to Dr. Reech's comment about a non-response is to some, in some respects, a response, but that's still not full enough of a reality. We need responses. So that's a big ding for us as we're looking at this. I'm appreciative of the work, and I am appreciative of the data. And one of my unasked questions that's kind of gotten answered was, okay, does, we have so many surveys, we have so many test, we have so many assessments, we have so many moments in a school year where we go in and poke people. There's just so many of them. So for me, every single one of them has to be high-leverage, high-value, or just be done away with. I mean, honestly. So it's great to hear that this is of value to the administration, and we all got budget on the brain right now. All have budget on the brain. So the really hard question will be about, like, with every single external tool that we use, every external vendor, how high is the leverage, and can we do it ourselves?
Thank you. All right. So, yes.
Thank you. I have kind of a nuts-and-bolds question. Our options, I think my understanding of our monitoring reports is that the mission is to get an understanding of what the administration understands about the data. And I personally, with respect to Panorama, would prefer that our staff present to us so that we get a sense of how you understand the data and not how Panorama understands the data. I think that would be helpful in the future with anything we're doing. And if we feel like we don't have that understanding, is our job to send it back and ask you to come back to us with this again? What is, what happens? If we don't accept this, do we ask for you to come back and share your understanding of it? Give us some disaggregated data, which was, you know, the presentation hasn't had? And then also come with that root cause analysis and the strategies? Is that what we, if we reject it, is that what we're asking for?
So LSG Training would ask you to table the monitoring report and share feedback with the superintendent during the meeting, and then let the superintendent know that you would like to consider voting on it later. And then the training would also say that if, following that, it is still not up to your specification, then you would vote against the monitoring report.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, yeah, table. Okay. Okay, so, yeah, table, okay.
Yes. So, I'd like to move to table.
Okay, is there a second? Okay. So, having a motion by trustee Boswell, and a second by trustee Zapata, to table the approval of this monitoring report, with the understanding that the administration will, will come back, tell us when and where we'll be able to review it again. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, just as a point, a point of discussion, I absolutely see this as an opportunity. I don't see this as a shaming, or whatever. I see this as something where we can learn even more in the next go-around.
Yep, thank you. Any other discussion on it? Okay, so, all those in favor, raise your hand, right hand. Those opposed, and those abstaining. Okay, so the motion passes with eight in favor and one abstention. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that was a first. Glad we got through it. All right, so next, let us move on to, let's see, oh, our last discussion item for tonight is a continuation of our scorecard conversation. And so, on April 17th and 18th, the Board of Trustees held a work session to review district data and discuss scorecard goals and constraints with our partners from the Council of Great City Schools. And last Thursday, we discussed the draft goals and constraints, and agreed on five goals, and provided feedback on four to five constraints. So, these discussions were recorded and can be found on the board's website and on the district's YouTube. So, included in tonight's agenda on Board Docs is a draft version of the scorecard goals and constraints. So, our work tonight is to finalize the last goals, these last goals, and discuss a potential new constraint focused on traditionally underserved communities in Austin ISD. So, the state legislature requires that the district sets at least three goals, which are part of House Bill III passed in 2019. Okay, so this includes setting targets based on the aggregate, all the students together, although the district will report out in student groups. Okay, so this means that these goals would, so here's the thing. So, if you, I don't know if it's helpful to actually bring up the list of goals, so we have the visual as well. Okay, thank you. All right, so, the first, the two goals you see here are required. They're, they're determined by the state, and so, we don't really have a say in what these two goals are. It's literacy and numeracy, so they both deal with third-grade star, reading in the first goal, and math in the second. You'll notice that we just have X percent and Y percent listed in both, and that is referring to the aggregate. So, you could have, we're taking all the students in the district, and saying the overall goal, what the overall goal is. The problem with that, especially in a district this size, that is very diverse, it is very easy to mask the gaps, right? And, and mask, like, and we've had this happen in the past in this district, where our, our aggregate continues to go up, 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 but when you actually disaggregate it, you see it's certain subgroups of students are going up, and others are going down, actually. And, and the ones that are going down are too small of a group in number to really make a change, to make a difference in the aggregate. And so, that's a problem, especially if you're looking at this through an equity lens, which is what I think we want to do. So, so I'm raising this, I'm lifting this up, because I'm not sure this was explicitly stated, and if it was, it probably wasn't stated enough, because it didn't super, it didn't exactly click for me until this week, that, oh my gosh, we really don't have any real student group goals for these two really critical scorecard measures. And so, so I wanted to tell you, I, I'm just going to read off my script here. So, it just means that these goals could be met, even if some smaller groups, such as African-American students, or students receiving special education, made no progress. Okay, I just want to make sure everyone understands that. So, to help address this, we are going to discuss a new constraint tonight that would focus on these traditionally underserved groups, like African-American students, students receiving special education, and students identified as emergent bilingual. And so, I just, I do want to thank a couple of the trustees, trustee Kaufman, vice president Foster, and secretary Boswell, who met today with A.J. Crable before the board meeting, to really, you know, hash this out a little bit. So, thank you all for, for talking about that, and, and really coming up with a potential constraint. I do want to mention, Dr. Reach, if you don't mind going to the next page. So, this one here, all, the, the same situation applies to the college and career and military readiness goal. And so, again, you can just see at the bottom line, it just says X and Y. So, again, we could reach that goal without doing a darn thing for African-American students, or students receiving special education services, and other groups that are too small to move the whole, you know, to move the whole aggregate. And we want to make sure, or the idea here is, how might we make sure nobody is falling through the cracks? So, at this point, Dr. Reach, do you have a, a presentation that you're gonna kind of do to kind of walk us through all the goals and, and all that? Or, Mathias, superintendent?
No, I, I'm happy to go through the goals and the constraints, and share where we're at. So, as mentioned, we have these HB3 goals, and they're pretty much set. Our third-grade literacy and numeracy will be focused around star, reading assessment in English or Spanish, and how that will increase. Also, I should mention, we do have some variability in how we can create this language, because we probably are unique as a district for making clear that we want to consider our assessments taken, whether in English or Spanish. Many districts will take just the testing subset, or just the test in English. So, there is some ability for our campus to tweak these to align with district values, although it does need, for these two especially, it does need to be a star test for third grade. So, we mentioned the college, career, and military readiness, which we have focused around the CCMR bonus criteria, which is the TCI, the TCI criteria, meeting that, plus earning an associate's degree, which trustee Boswell reminded me today, and we are going to update on this language, that you actually have until August, immediately following your graduation, during your associate's degree, and it counts. So, we're going to update that. Enrolling in post-secondary institution, or earning the Initiative-Based Certification Level One or Level Two. The other two that we discussed was middle school math, and we are looking at Algebra I, successfully completing the course by earning the credit and achieving meets grade level or above on the Algebra I EOC. So, that's based off of the feedback that we heard during our meeting last week. We also have our new goal, the AID SEAL of Bili literacy, and we have added to this to make clear that we would also accept the Texas SEAL of Bili literacy, or the Global SEAL of Bili literacy, and that that will all be focused for us, and we will, of course, be able to report out when we share on this goal, on all of those. Looking at our constraints, we had two where we had clear guidance, that we were, we were moving forward with these two, and that is the superintendent shall not allow practices in staffing, resource, distribution, or campus practices that exclude disproportionately impacted or fail to support historically underserved students, and the superintendent shall not allow families to be without meaningful partnership with our campus and district. So, these two have not changed since we first discussed them back on the 17th and 18th last month. The other draft constraints that we are wanting to get some clarity on, is we heard a lot of discussion around the early learning and the social-emotional learning. And while we, we heard a lot of language around possibly keeping those separate, there was also some interest in discussing a combined constraint that included both of these together. So, you'll actually see draft language for that below, which came from some of our language, and then some work from trustee, to provide this combination of the first two. So, one question that we have for the board is, are we looking at the two separate, or the one combined? And then, as trustee Singh mentioned, a new draft constraint that would look at historically marginalized groups, and what we are suggesting is, and what we discussed today with our board officers and with trustee Kaufman, is language around the superintendent shall not allow practices that lead to academic disparities among targeted student populations, and then we would actually name those. African-American students, students receiving special education services, and emergent bilingual students. And then, without getting into the constraint progress measures, I would mention that we would not see one CPM for each of those groups. We would see a combined, you know, between one and three CPMs for those groups, and then report out on the three. If that, I hope that makes sense.
Thank you. Could someone from the administration speak to what the cost or benefit would be on Slide Six, to having that constraint broken up versus combined? What is the, what's the difference that I'm looking at?
So, trustee Gonzalez, I think, one difference is just that it allows us to align those progress measures and that work together. So, when staff was working through these constraints, these were the two that we really needed to do a lot of discussion on, to try and figure out, well, what is going to be that progress measure that's going to be very meaningful, that's going to show us that we are accomplishing this, and that we're being successful at it. And we, we were not, what I would say is that for the first two constraints, I mean, we could talk for hours about, we can do this, and we can do this, and we're, we're going to find a lot of agreement, like, yeah, that's good, that's good. It's actually going to be really hard to come down to three for those. But for these two, you know, especially the early learning, you know, we were really looking at one, and really trying to figure out how we build that out. And so, I think it would then allow us just to think about these things together, and think about those constraint progress measures together, and allow, you know, they talked a lot about, does the superintendent have flexibility to create progress measures, or create systems to accomplish this? When they're combined, I, I think there's probably a little bit more room to accomplish that, while still touching on both of those. When they're separate, I think for early learning, we may see a single progress measure. At the same time, I think directly to your point, you know, those progress measures could still be the same, whether they were separated or together. But I do think that it does provide us some opportunity to just align that work a little bit better. But either way, you know, we're, whatever the board comes up with, we're going to be ready to create progress measures, create plans, and get the work done.
Yeah, and thank you for that, Dr. Reach. I, I think that's exactly right. The only thing I would add is, because you have up to three, you know, and we were talking about last time, perhaps having a, a multilingual or bilingual education constraint, now that's moved over to a goal, right, modified, right, as, as you saw, this is, this is no longer maybe, no pun intended, constrained in that way. You have the ability to go to, if you'd like, and I think we're happy to support it, or not support it, we're going to support whatever you do, but, but it works fine for us, I guess is what I would say. I just want the assumption to be that it's three constraint progress measures, three constraint progress measures, three constraint progress measures. I mean, I, I think that's the concern that I would have, is just by adding it, does it necessarily assume that we'll have three and three? And that's okay, then we're totally fine.
I have a follow-up about that, and, and for my colleagues, actually, and wondering if you're understanding this the way I understood it. I understood the first one as being about academics that are supportive of students' emotional and social learning and mental health, but are also how we teach specifically, rather than something that I think is also more kind of a climate and culture, and, and social-emotional learning specifically. But I, I see them as being interrelated but distinct, in that, that one is more focused on academics, and one is more focused on the other. Is, are you seeing that? I mean, I think they're both whole child, but in different ways.
Would it be possible for someone, I mean, Dr. Reach, I know you spoke about, like, the possibilities that open up if those two constraints were combined. Is it too early to ask, like, what is that thinking? Because that's, that makes me curious, like, is there some benefit to having those tied together? I mean, I hear the, the specificity that trustee Boswell is talking about when they're broken apart, but...
I mean, I, I think, given where we are, and I, trustee Boswell, I appreciate that comment. You know, I, I personally view it as, you know, whole child both, but academic is kind of the focus for the early, early learning, and then, what I think is maybe hidden in the, with the constraints, that constraint is written as the mental health aspect, which is a big initiative of ours. You know, we've talked about it, and so, being able to present that work and support that work, and have it be really reinforced by the constraint is appealing to, to me personally. I think at this point, because there's support for both, what we could do is go to the next step, provide you what the constraint progress measures we would recommend would look like, and if they don't respond to your interpretation, then we can make an adjustment and combine. But I, I feel like, hoping, keeping them separate is probably going to get us there.
I have a second question, wondering if we were to use the combined, and perhaps add the word academic or not, keep it social-emotional, oh, academic is on there, so I see that. If we wanted to get to something closer to maybe one of the things we were thinking about, about early learning, or something more general, where we address the quantity of testing, the quantity of screen time, some of the things that I think are, we were trying to perhaps get at with that. And if we did the combined one, if it might be worth considering something like that. So, we're getting at both of them, but in two different ways.
I mean, I, I guess, I think there's multiple avenues to get there. I think the, for me, I think you can achieve that in both. I think, as I think about this, the, the mental health aspect, and given how much focus we've had on that over the last year, wants me to kind of support that, maybe in a different way, as a constraint. And so, if we were to reinforce, or maybe tighten up kind of those aspects, in the early learning, or maybe, I mean, I think there's different ways we could tackle that, honestly. But no, I, I think the administration, that we hear that, and I, I would expect that to be reflected in our constraint progress measures. I do think that having the two gives us flexibility in what we provide back, just generally speaking. But I guess, am I hearing you and saying that you want to be more intentional about adding something that maybe provides some firmness around?
What I'm thinking is that if we were to combine them, we could come at the early learning from a different perspective, really just brainstorming and thinking of, of the values we heard when we did our community engagement, kind of some of the things we heard, that that was, you know, one of the threads. So, but I'm, I'm open to seeing what you guys bring, and open to hearing, really, what other people on the board think about how we get closer to kind of being really specific about reflecting what we heard from our community.
Thank you.
So, I, I appreciate that, Superintendent Segura, you lifted up the mental health piece, because that was part of my feeling about the, have, keeping it separate, was I really did see these as, I mean, everything's connected, but I saw these as distinct, and I saw that the social and emotional learning constraint created a real opportunity to help us stay focused on something that you all have been leaning into, and that everybody wants. We're, we're pretty far down this process. I mean, it feels like we're, we're almost there with our goals, with our constraints, and so, if this is just too much, too late, it is what it is. But I, is there an opportunity or possibility around something that has to do with the, the, the touchpoints around testing and assessments as a component of students' mental health? Or is that just too much? Do you understand what I'm asking? And to put a finer point on it, I think one aspect of the diminished mental health is having to take so many tests.
And we had a caller tonight talk about a child who cries because of so many tests. And, and we know that's not the only child, and that's not the only parent we've heard from, so I appreciate that.
So, so we have room for five constraints, and so, we don't have to combine them in order to stabilize. Like, if we kept them separate, we'd still be good, even with the new one, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And, like, I'll just weigh in. I like the idea of keeping... And like, I'll just weigh in, I like the idea of keeping them separate as well. And I would like to make sure everybody gets a chance to weigh in on that one. And I also, because of that one about the new one, the historically marginalized groups, I also wanted to just make sure we hear from trustees your opinions on that one as well. But, so I will just say the two things, I'm in favor of keeping early learning separate from social and emotional learning. And for the historically marginalized groups, I just, I appreciate this. And I wanted to, when, when the administration is developing the constraint progress measures, I, I would be interested to know, so like when, when we conceived of having this constraint, the idea was targeting groups that were small, like too small to really impact the, you know, the aggregate, but we don't want to lose them, they're still important. So I see how African-American students are a smaller group. I see the students receiving special education also a smaller group. Emergent bilingual is an important group too, but it, I don't know if that's a bigger group because I know we have a lot of students in that category, but I also don't want them to fall through the, through the cracks. So I just wanted to have a little conversation on that too and just make sure that we vetted that because we haven't really vetted this particular constraint as a, as a board yet. So trustee Kaufman.
So I'll start with the historically marginalized groups. I, I love this constraint, I think it's a really important one. And I do think if we're considering groups that are too small, right, or that, that may fall through the cracks, then, then now we're really talking about like Native American or Asian Pacific Islander or some of the groups that are very small. Because I think, you know, special education, that's 14%, I believe. I think African-American is 6%. Those are clearly, you know, not large numbers, but there's a lot of students in those groups still. I think it's really important to include emergent bilingual because when, wherever we've looked at our data and have the depressing view that things are still like this, these are the three groups of substantial size that are always there at the lower levels when we know that the students are, are able to do so much more if we gave them the opportunity. So I feel like it's really important to include those three because of the reason of their historic marginalization and because of their historic underperformance because of the underinvestment that we've given them. So I like to include all three. I also like to acknowledge again that that doesn't mean that there's not going to be an effort by the superintendent and the entire district to serve other students where we see gaps. This is just identifying these as the three priorities based on the number of students and the, the historic gaps. So I like this one and I like that. I don't like the word targeted, just because targeted has, you know, I mean, there's a, there's a lot of uses for the word target that aren't positive. So if we could figure out a different word for targeted, whether that's, you know, whether we use historically marginalized again or we use under-invested or whatever, another term, but if we could choose something other than targeted, please. I can hold my comment on the other one, the combined, or I can give that now.
Can you comment on IE versus EG?
In this case, I think you would have to be IE because we're restricted to those three, whereas EG would be, for example. So I'm okay with IE. You know my, you know my thing, okay.
Glad to know the Harvard degree came in handy. Okay, go ahead and weigh in on the other one.
We, we spared you all the discussion about whether it's within or among. That happened before the meeting. On the combined one, I proposed the combined one, and the reason I proposed the combined one was because of concerns by our coach that we were being too directive with the early learning and the social emotional learning and trying to tie it more specifically to specific things we heard in the feedback. I would say I prefer them separate, and I think that both early learning and social emotional learning were clearly identified as values for our community in the feedback we had in this process. And for all of us, I would think that our historic engagement with the community has validated that as a concern also. So I think that they are both completely justified based on what we know about our community values. I will say that the other concern, you know, about the being overly directive, I, I think, I think we're okay on the early learning because although there are agreed upon like industry standards for appropriate practices and it's, there's plenty of room within there to identify what are the target areas or what are the pieces. So I feel comfortable with that one. For social emotional learning, I think we could mitigate some of that concern about being overly directive, while I support the idea of saying fully integrated evidence-based system because we know that that's what we were working on before. I would be okay with some language I just sent to Jacob, which would be something more around the superintendent shall not implement an instructional program that ignores social and emotional learning and mental health support for students. But I, I'm also okay with this one, but I just want to introduce an alternative to that. So that's all I have to say.
That's helpful. All right, who's next? Have you weighed in, trustee Gonzalez? We'll just go down the line.
I'll just say, I agree with all the points that trustee Kaufman made. I don't have anything else I think I could add. Yeah, I was kind of leaning more towards the combined, but after hearing the discussion, I think I do prefer the separation of those constraints. So yeah, that's it.
Thank you. trustee Hunter?
Benadryl has kicked in, now I gotta stay awake. I am excited to see what the administration will bring back under the first one. Because I think we do a lot of lump summing, right? We say historically marginalized, but now we've got these, like, so how are you improving? And it is, I will share some data with you probably tomorrow, where I have, based on our October data, gone through every school and calculated out exactly how many African-American students are on every single campus. For the purpose of, we have three kids there. Why are they not successful? Just three, that's all you gotta do is those three. And so I'll, I'll be happy to see what comes back from the administration. And as trustee Kaufman said, it was always about the number. Them separated out is fine.
Thank you. trustee Foster?
Yeah, the only thing would be the testing piece, should I?
I, I pretty much already spoke, but the only thing I would, I would lift up is, is the possible inclusion in some constraint around testing, if possible, in that social emotional learning slash mental health piece.
Thank you. I already went, so trustee Boswell.
I like the idea of separate. I think they are distinct and, and I appreciate the focus on both. And I do think it reflects, as many people have said, what we heard from our community. And something about testing, it would, I would love. I think that gets to meaningful education, critical thought, a lot of what we heard and mental health and a lot of other things. And making sure that our kids have that time to learn, not, you know, more time learning, less time testing. I think our community has, one of our values is that that will lead to better results on the tests and deeper learning. So I don't know if it's, if there's a way to fit that in, but I do appreciate that. And I, I think the new one, I appreciate, I think there's, it's, there's real value in it, and I like including all three. And I'm not sure, I think we could shorten it by getting rid of targeted student populations, IE, and just say academic disparities among and have our list. So that would be my suggestion on that one.
Thank you. trustee Sapata?
So I'm in agreement with the five. And in the last comment, trustee Boswell said as well. And also, what was the, the testing piece? Yes. To see how we can add that because you're right, there's so many children that get very, very ill, so young because of a test. So I'm in agreement, supportive of that. Thank you.
If I may go backwards for one second and say that I, I do think the testing is to some degree an equity issue in our district as well. And we have a really long history of testing some students more than others, focusing on test scores for some students more than others. And I think there is an equity piece to that that hits some communities harder than others.
Good point. Thank you. trustee Lugo?
Yeah, I like the suggestion to modify the historically marginalized groups constraint to remove targeted student populations and list the students. I'll be interested to see what the constraint progress measures will be because part of what I'm also thinking about is the disparity between economically disadvantaged and non-economically disadvantaged students. But I know that there's overlap, I know there's lots, been lots of conversation around that. I just wanted to express that thought. And then in terms of the other, the early childhood and then the, so if we could go to the next slide. Yeah, I agree with trustee Gonzalez. You know, at first I thought maybe combining the two might have some utility, but I think at this point, keeping them separate and then again, seeing what the constraint progress measures will be, will help further the dialogue and the collaborative effort.
Thank you.
And so something I want to refine on the, the early learning, I think instead of the superintendent shall not allow students to be taught using developmentally inappropriate practices, like, you know, this is my jam is early childhood developmentally inappropriate practices, but I don't say any, think anyone could say, oh, as a parent, I have never engaged in a developmentally inappropriate practice with my, my children. So I think I'd like to change the wording there and, and on the last one to the superintendent shall not require or support developmentally inappropriate assessments and practices or fail to support developmentally appropriate learning in early childhood through second grade. On the next slide with our new constraint, can I see that one, Dr. Rech? And so again, like, we, we know that practices that lead to disparities aren't going to end tomorrow, unfortunately. So for setting ourselves up for failure, I want to set it, like, what do we want for these students? So I would also see, like to see the wording as the superintendent shall not fail to support rich academic and, rich academic experiences and equitable learning experiences that meet the needs of students while engaging them in meaningful learning. Or, or something that, like, what do we want for those students that will give them equitable access to learning?
Thank you. So I think everyone has spoken. The only comment, I, I appreciate that, trustee Willy Chu, I will say, I, I'm just remembering one of the coaching that we got was don't, you know, was to avoid double negatives. And so, and so I, so with the, like, the superintendent shall not fail to, you know, provide, I'll be, you know, whatever you said.
See, I feel like there was a lot of double negative. I think we didn't, I didn't know that's new, that's.
Yeah, so, but I would ask, Dr. Rech, when you're wordsmithing these, would you mind checking with our coach and just getting their kind of?
Of course.
I don't like it, yeah, I don't like it either, but.
Yeah, no, I hear you. I'm just, I'm already, you know, sort of predicting what the feedback might be on that, but I appreciate the sentiment for sure. And I think if we can't, if we can't do the double negative, if there's a milder verb we could use instead of allow, that could be helpful.
Are y'all okay, well, is the board okay with the administration working with trustee Willy Chu to refine that language?
Yeah, of course.
And, and just be, the only reason, I guess, trying to draw, get to consensus and then instead of going back, so I just.
Yes.
And then on this one, I heard a couple, on the historically marginalized groups, I heard a couple different kind of recommendations. I've got a couple noted here. Could we work specifically with, with just you presiding or, I mean?
Sure, sure.
Because I'd like to kind of get to another draft before the end of, maybe, maybe middle next week so that we can create a timeline and respond.
Yes. And do we have a, do we have a governance meeting between now and our?
We have one, not next Wednesday, but the Wednesday after.
Okay, so maybe we can also.
While we are at graduations.
Yeah, we're all going to be together anyway, I'll figure, we'll figure it out. We'll get you cornered.
Okay, so maybe, we get to maybe have the officers at least, you know, not just me, but the three of us.
We will be together, but we will not be discussing board business.
That's right, that's right, for sure.
Yeah, just the officers.
Just the three of us, we're under form. So yes.
Although we are posted for all graduations, just in case anyone questions us later.
Okay.
I was about to say something like.
All right.
I have a question before we move on. Sorry, I have a question before we move on. Can we just go through and just kind of read each one of them together before we move on? And make sure we're really solid with all of them, not just the ones that have changed because we haven't looked at them again?
Yeah. Do we need to read them out loud?
No, I, I don't think we need to read them out loud. I would just love to put each one up on the screen for people who are watching from home. Yeah, this is like a read aloud, yeah.
Thank God.
First great thing.
I'm starting to get anxious there.
But I just would like to put them up on the screen for everyone who wants to see them. I mean, if we need to read them for people who, you know, can't read them and, and need to hear them, we could do that. But I just want to be sure we're not, that we're, because we're closing in on this, that we re-look at them because, with the benefit of a week behind us.
I volunteer to read them to the tune of Twinkle Twinkle Little Star if you'd like.
Please, please.
Please. No, no, please don't, please don't.
But you're not going to read them?
I think we're good with the first two. I think everyone's, let's go to the next screen.
We've looked at the third one pretty thoroughly, I think.
Middle School Math.
And Middle School Math, I think we can point out that it, it does allow us to disaggregate.
Can I mention one thing actually? So I always, so successfully complete means the same thing as pass?
Yeah, so we said that they would earn course credit and achieve meets grade level. And I have data that I can share with the board, and Ms. Hanson was able to do a table that showed us the number of students who got course credit but did not get at approaches, meets or masters on the star. She was able to show that there are students who get at approaches and meets on the star but actually don't pass the course. And then we're using the meets level as well, so one above approaches. So we'll have students who pass the class and get approaches, but we would not list them in the X.
I think my question was the, not about having the, how they do in the course and the EOC, it was like just the language around, can we just say who, who passed the course and achieve meets grade level?
Or earn course credit and achieve, oh, sorry, earn course credit and achieve meets grade level or above.
Successfully earn course, now I'm going to say it, my head is.
Just, just take, just by removing the successfully complete.
I understand, yes. I understand the edit.
I didn't mean to bruise your ears.
Okay, yeah, I like the idea of taking.
We need one variable, so I think that's why we were having successfully complete.
Dr. Jay Brown, do you just want to come up to speak into the record?
For Lone Star Governance, I think we need one variable, so I think we were creating successfully completes as our one variable. We can, we can make that another word, but I think because we were saying two things, make that one variable is how we were trying to make that run-on sentence work for real.
I know, no, I'm good with it. Are y'all good with it? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I just have one question for the administration is the idea of successfully completing being meets rather than approaches, when that is successful for a student to move forward. I know we have chosen meets for our other measures. Are you matching that? Is there a reason you feel like that's the right measure? Or do the data tell us something about student success with that in place? Kind of what is the recommendation about that? Approaches versus meets? And why, why do we support choosing meets?
Yeah, so certainly, you know, students can be successful on approaches, so we're not trying to indicate that. But we do feel that the standard that we want to see students at is a meet standard. And so that is our high expectation for students, is that all of our students will be at meets or higher, because of course, if you're at masters, you're also at meets. And so it's about having that high expectation for the test. And to be honest and to be transparent, yes, part of it is also that we discussed how we align it with the other indicators that we have, that we're already at meets as well.
Yeah, I know that's always been our practice and yeah, just, and wanted to be really clear about why we're choosing that rather, and, and that you can pass without that, but, or you can move on without that, but that's why we're doing that. you can move on without that, but that's why we're doing that. So thank you. That was helpful. I appreciate that.
Do you want to speak to the next one?
Are we on the next one?
Yes.
On the seal of by literacy, I would just want to make sure the language clarifies that it's students who graduate with the seal. So it's not that they have to achieve the seal their senior year. They could, they could have reached that criteria earlier. Does it, is that captured in this wording? That we would want to, like all seniors who are graduating having earned it at some point? Is that captured by this language?
That's correct. So this would be, the universe would be graduates, but they could have earned it prior to their senior year.
Okay. As long as that's clear, then.
And similarly, you know, very close to that, I would mention, you know, the algebra's very close, same thing. You know, we're saying students before why they're enrolled in middle school. So it could be seventh grade, it could be sixth grade.
Okay.
Would it help to change that language to have earned? So it encompasses a bigger period of time? Just make it really clear?
And, and just so, here we can communicate back, because when we left the last board meeting, the, the feedback we received was AIC seal of by literacy. And so we took that to the team and to the focus groups, multiple education weighed in, and we had a conver, there was feedback that suggested that in this way, by including Texas seal of by literacy and global seal of by literacy, it's more inclusive. It allows us to really kind of reinforce the intent here for our graduates. And so we worked out with trustee Kaufman and, and I think this is the kind of, I guess, the result of that effort. That's why it's so, that's why it's different than what we received from y'all a week ago.
And I also want to note on that, I want to be careful that we, I mean, there's three groups of students who can help us achieve this. And when you, there are students who are, you know, middle-class English-speaking students who can achieve these things. And there are students who are identified as emergent bilingual, who are legally entitled to a bilingual ESL education. And there are students who are traditionally not included in those things, that are students who are on entry and reduced lunch, and African-American students who have not had access to these programs the same way. So I just wonder, you know, I think the, the most important emphasis on this, I think, is to ensure that our students who are emergent bilingual have the opportunity to, to, to leverage their strength that they bring in. I think the second priority would be incurred to make sure that all of our students have access to these programs. It's not just based on your SIP code. And then the third priority would be to making sure that we, we know within Austin, we have a tremendous interest by all sorts of families to be in these programs, and we want to create access for them. So I guess my question would be, how do we make this the most effective board goal? Do we specify specifically one group? Do we discount on the fact that it's going to be disaggregated, that we'll have a chance to look across groups? Or do we need a different approach?
So trustee Kaufman, I think one of the things that we discussed that I think helped me kind of internalize when we operationalized with this, why this would be okay at this point is because of the constraint that we just completed reworking, which included a focus on emergent bilingual. And so the, the way that I view the constraints is we have the goals, we're gonna move to work, but those things are the, the superintendent shall not. And so I think by, with this goal and that constraint, by design, you should mitigate that, I guess, risk or concern over the duration of the effort, which is five years. So that's, that's kind of the way I internalize it, interpret it, but certainly open to, you know, the way the board would want to provide feedback.
And, thank you. Before I lose the thread, I also just noticed that the language used for those three categories kind of changed from what it was on the feedback from Met. So the Austin, it's the Austin ISD Dual Language Seal of by Literacy. It's the Texas Performance Acknowledgement for Bilingualism and by Literacy. And it's the AISD Global Seal of by Literacy. So just to make sure that we include the actual names.
Thank you. We will update that.
All right. Any other comments on this one? Do we want to have a discussion on, do we need to make this more narrow and identify which student groups here? Or do we think the constraint will take care of it?
I like the idea of broad access on this, because I think it's, yeah, I think that's part of the mission. As trustee Kaufman said, like, we're looking at multiple groups who benefit from this.
Okay.
And I think it's worth measuring all of it unless someone sees it differently.
All right. Cool. Well, thank you. All right. Now, do, let's, do we need to review the constraints as well?
I think we should, because I think we're finding things as we go through, and I think it's worth doing. My question about the underserved students, do we think, my understanding from our community engagement, from our conversations, is that we're hoping to capture, as it says, staffing, resource distribution? Are we hoping this captures extracurricular activities that we've been measuring in the past, that sense of belonging? Are we hoping this captures discipline data? What are we hoping this, what's the universe of things we hope are within this?
Trustee, as well, I'll just mention that, you know, we probably spend the most amount of time as staff around this constraint, because we do feel that there are a lot of meaningful progress measures that could align with this. And, you know, I even feel that we're gonna get to the point where there's gonna be a great argument to say, oh, this, you know, X could have also been included. And that's gonna be correct. But with understanding that we are limited to three, we wanted to look to see how we're aligning with the three items that are specifically called out in the item, staffing, resource distribution, and campus practices. And that's what we were trying to focus on.
Okay. And again, that's really broad. So I think, do we, are we gonna wait and see what we get and, and then determine if that, if we need to be more specific? I think that's what our coaching has been, right? Wait and see if, what GPMs we get, and then refine if we don't feel like it's aligning with what we had in mind? Does that work? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So for family engagement, any comments? The only comment I would offer, and it's probably implicit in there, is family engagement is, what, what is the view of family engagement that we're talking about here? Is it kind of like, you know, you engage like you would say on a PTA, or like being act, an active part of the school community? Or is it more like family engagement in terms of, you know, parents knowing how to support their child at home and understanding the educational programs and the pathways available to their child? Or do we mean both?
I would hope we mean both.
Okay.
But I'm really, at the state of the district currently, B is necessary. We, you know, that was one of the root cause analysis, when we talked about CC, like, parents just don't know. And when they're jumping ship and knowing, like, I'm gonna do this program, this program, it's like, these are the outcomes of that. And just having them understand, I'm still, excuse me, very concerned about parents not opening report cards. I, I cannot hear that anymore. It's too many clicks in. They're just not doing it right. And when I say that, I'm talking about resourced parents, right? Resourced parents not clicking in, or even checking progress reports. And so knowing, like, what is a progress report? Why, if you, even if you don't even open it up, if you open up your mail, cause it's a trick, there's a little PDF that says, go look over there. It's kind of weird. But when you open to see, if I, my kid got a progress report, that means that in some class, they have a 72 or below. And that's enough for me to be like, hey, I got, what's, what's up? That's enough to, to prompt a conversation with the student, right? But if I don't even know that, then I'm just like, delete, next. I mean, they're telling me about his progress. That's awesome. No, we're telling you, your kid's in trouble. And this is the time to intervene. And so that's what, when I want family engagement, I want third-grade parents to be able, and I've been talking to parents this whole weekend today at our little meeting. Ask the, your teacher, is my kid on reading level? Is my kid on grade level? Not, can he read? Cause that's a, right? When I'm saying, can he read? I want to know, is my kid on grade level? That's the first question. And the second question is if they're like, no. It's like, what are you doing to help them? The next question is, what can I do at home? Right? I, I'm just gonna say this, I'm gonna get my soapbox. This district has a super awesome two-gen program for our immigrant families and our refugee families. We are working with students and we are working with parents at the same time. We're doing a beautiful job of that. If you are a native English speaker, you are a citizen, and you're middle-class, you're really in trouble now. And they're some of the worst offenders. Our affluent parents, not offenders, but they're the ones that I see mostly going, I just don't know. I, I haven't looked. Because they can afford to fix that, right, down the line. We should be working with all of our parents, so that they are engaged, so that they know what's going on, so that they can ask those questions. But they don't even know what questions to ask. And my child has gone to some different schools. And so I'm in those threads going, how do you not know that? Right? And it's really important. And the other day, I just had to jump in. I know we don't jump in, but I was like, the best person to answer that question would be, yes, counselor, not this Facebook group. Go ask the counselor. And I just, cause I'm like, why are people giving advice? You know? And it's about things like, how do we, the STAR test, it's about like, what if your kid failed the class? I'm like, nobody in this group can help you with that. Right? And, and they're like, people are like, Delta, and this. I was like, there are some steps before that. And so when we have parents that don't know, they're not our partners. That's not meaningful. Right? That, that's customers. And we don't want customers, right? We always say customer service, no. What we want are family services, partner services. So that's my soapbox.
Thank you. Other trustees want to weigh in on how they're thinking about family engagement with this. Yes, trustee Sabata.
No, I, I also agree that family engagement is true family engagement with the parents. There is a big difference with just inviting them to a PTA. There isn't a way to measure that, that is helping them learn how to help their student be successful in school. You get involved in so many activities that, you know, it's not really helping them to learn what trustee Hunter is saying. So, yeah, we have to be very strategic in, in the family engagement that, that we are providing to every parent. And what are the strategies? You know, who do you start inviting? How do you begin having those conversations with parents? So they know that there is someone. I mean, I've met parents just this month who didn't know who the parent support specialist was, and they were having a lot of issues with their students. And so, you know, there's still a lot of work for us to do in that area. And I think we have the perfect people. The parent support specialists have all the skillsets to do this work. So it's really getting them to be able to, to have that kind of fam, uh, parent engagement to help. So that would help us be able to reach student outcomes by, you know, I know what, when you parent, when they begin seeing their parents involved, students just have this different kind of, you know, attitude about school. They become proud and they're happy and they want to participate. And so, yeah, I think that's the family engagement I like to see. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah. And a yes to all of this. I think it is that engagement with academics. I think it's, I think we chose the word partnership for specific reasons. I think it encompasses relationships, it encompasses belonging, it encompasses shared decision-making about some of the things that happen on campuses. The state provides a mechanism through campus advisory councils that are required by the state on every campus, and have specific duties approving the campus improvement plan, you know, understanding that. And I think it's that idea that our families are experts in what they want for our children. Our district is stronger when we listen to that. And our families don't come with all the knowledge that our educators have. Our families bring one kind of knowledge, our educators bring another. And making sure that there is a two-way, partnership is a two-way word. And I think that's what we're trying to capture in this. You know, that it's, it's a place of belonging, it's a place of knowledge, and it's a place of knowledge that travels two ways. And relationships that go two ways.
Thank you. Anyone else have comments on this? Oh, yeah, trustee Little.
Yeah, family engagement is just fascinating to me, cause I'm gonna give an example. So throughout the school year, and this happens to be with my kindergartner, throughout the school year, you know, I'd get messages, you know, weekly newsletters, you know, what kiddos are learning in their class. The fall and then the spring, parent-teacher conference notice was, hey, if you have any concerns, let me know. Otherwise, I don't think we really need to meet. And then a week ago, I was told, you know, hey, I'm sending home this piece of information, blah, blah, blah. Your child did really well on A, B, and C. But, you know, just be aware that there appears to be maybe some signs of dyslexia. So I'm hearing the conversation, right? And I'm thinking, huh. Is that parent engagement? Right? And I'm also thinking, oh my God, we don't have money. Oh my God, our teachers are overworked. Oh my God, how's all this gonna happen? Oh, right, parents are equally overburdened and stretched and stressed and worried. And do we want our kids to learn? Ah, yes. Do we want to support our teachers? Yes. Do we want to be able to look at the report card? Yeah. That's, no, seriously. It is a lot. And then I think about the middle school, where they have, they happen to have a parent support specialist. It's a lot to accomplish. I know you and your administration are keenly aware of that. I guess I just share my story, because I know there's no mal-intent, right? I don't know how we get there, but I know that I'm not the only one that experiences that. And then in terms of, you know, why don't you go to your counselor? Going to the counselor isn't always the option, because the person, and this isn't true necessarily for the campuses where my kids go. I'm just saying, sometimes the people that we are told to go to aren't able to help us. The other thing is, sometimes the way families make their way to true meaningful partnerships is because there's a crisis. I know that's generally, broadly, generally true for people who access public services. The times that they're gonna go to a public agency is when they need help. And it's usually at a point in time where things have gotten bad enough that they seek out that help. I would like to see meaningful partnerships be the floor. Right? And again, I understand there's lots of realities that we're dealing with that make that challenging. But for me, that's what I'm talking about when I see the word meaningful partnerships. It is what it is that I get this letter, you know, at the end of the school year about my kiddo, when we had opportunities to talk, you know? And again, that's ultimately on me. I'm her, I'm my child's parent. There's also a certain level of trust that it's like, oh, I guess if the person at school who sees this child every day says that it's okay and there's nothing to talk about, I'm gonna trust that that's true. So I just wanted to share that. And then the other general comment, as I've been sitting here thinking about the phrases, the superintendent shall not allow. I don't know, man, that kind of rubs me some kind of way. And I really liked trustee Whitley Chu's kind of wordsmithing. And I'm not gonna remember it verbatim, but it's something around, along the lines of, are you gonna share? Okay, okay. So I'll read it. But yeah, there's something about like, shall not allow, right? But isn't it about shall now, maybe it's shall not support practices that hurt children, right? And this is not the exact phrase, right? But shall not support practices that hurt children, shall not support practice. Something around there, because to say you shall not allow, I mean, we all know, we all know what's gonna happen. We all know it's gonna. We all know it's going to hap, why? Because people are tired and they're stressed and they've got a lot of work and they don't get paid enough. And we're all human and we're just trying to do our best. And sometimes it's just hard. And then one last, last, last comment about family engagement. Can I also say, like, it's the little things? It really is the little things, y'all. Like, I swear, if one day I roll up to an elementary school and the folks that are working there, if they actually, let me give a different story. Let me give a different story. There, last year, there was a point in time when my, the elementary school where my kids go, there was an interim principal. And I nearly fell out the car when this person came to our car. It was the car line, right? Everybody's just trying to get their kids in and out, right? Came to the car line, said hello. Oh, my God, I know you know who I'm talking about. Said hello, opened the door for my kids. That was like, oh, my God, thank, I literally fell out. I was about to cry. Because my experience prior and to this day has been, you, good luck, get your child out that car. I hope you're having a good day, but you got to go. So it is the little things. It is the little things that instill trust and vulnerability so that parents can go to the counselor, so that parents can go to the teacher. Because I'm, I don't know about other people, but for me, it requires some level of vulnerability for me to be like, you know what, maybe I should go to that parent-teacher conference. You know, maybe I'm not doing things right, or maybe I could be doing things better. So that's just, yeah.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so I think you probably heard what we need, what we mean by family engagement. A lot of it is parent support and making sure that parents know how to support their children and their educational journeys and how they're doing in school, as well as the collaborative decision-making and things like that. And, and knowing how to navigate the system. So, thank you. Any thoughts on, on these constraints that are up here?
Today at our meeting, I got to talk with the social emotional wellbeing people that kind of got all this into the district. And what I, when I read this, just go back to where we started. Just go back. We, we have lost focus and we are off track. So when I see that, what I'm saying is, go back to the way it was meant to be, the way it was started, the way it's most helpful. And, and be authentic and be deliberate and, like, do it. Like, we really started off really, really great. And, you know, time, capacity, money, or people's egos and agendas that are no longer in the district got, got us off, off track. And so I, I think that we know how to do this already. In fact, we do it better than anybody else, from what I understand, or we did it better than anybody else. So I, I feel like that's a layup for you.
Need layups. Appreciate that.
All right. Thank you.
Presenting on the, on the previous one, on the family engagement, I, I don't, we heard a lot of really great things, and I very much appreciate that. Would it be okay for me, for us to work specifically with a trustee before we come back to the governance, I mean, to the officers? Just because I could go a couple of different ways with what I heard. So if that's okay, that I maybe reach out to trustee Boswell and trustee Lugo to kind of get that one refined a little bit?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure that's cool.
Trustee Hunter would be a good one, too.
No, I really, I really think that. Not trying to get out of it, but I really think that trustee Lugo is your, is really your best one because she's a full-time, working, single parent at capacity. Like, she's really going to tell you that I have the privilege of time and having been a teacher. Right? So I'm always coming from the perspective of, I already know the ins and outs of it. Right? So I'm, I'm good on telling you how we should share. I'm not great on that experience. I think that's good. And I think that Lynn just comes with a wealth of experience, having done PTA and having, you know, worked with so many different PTAs, and she's heard a lot more voices. So I think those are really, for that reason, are good selections.
Well, and trustee Boswell is an officer. We'll, we'll be able to kind of get that anyway. So I, I think that will work. That's cool.
That's great. Okay, any other comments on the SEL? Okay, let's go.
I just want to reinforce trustee Hunter's point that we were, we led the nation in this. We pioneered this in many ways. It was deeply embedded in who we were as a district for children and adults and families. You know, the number of people over time who said, my kids came home and taught me how to breathe deeply when I was stressed out. It, it had become, like, it was moving beyond the walls of our campuses. And it has become optional. It has become, you know, it is, there are places that are, remain beautiful bright spots and talk about how transformative it is to behaviors, to academics, to the whole system, to belonging, to attendance. And there are places that have been allowed to see it as unimportant. And yes to everything trustee Hunter said on that, that we've got a beautiful system that's been in place. And, and I hope to get back to something closer than that. I think that's part of, part of it, for sure. And I know, I also know that we've talked a lot about moving closer to staffing for our counselors. And that may be something, you know, I know we can't do that right now. But I, I think there are a lot of possibilities here, and I'll be excited to see what you bring to us. And I know that you're doing a lot of thoughtful work on this.
Thank you. All right, let's look at the next slide. And I remember the feedback about removing the word targeted and maybe cleaning up the language a little bit and taking out the IE and just listing them out.
Yeah, I think we have that comment covered.
I think we're good. Any final thoughts on this one? Okay. That was a good idea. Thank you, Secretary Boswell, for having us go through all of this again. All right, so, yes, good teamwork, good teamwork. All right, so, thank you so much to the team. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. Thank you, Dr. Brown.
All right, so now we are on to the consent agenda. You might want to pull it up. Okay. Trustees, are there any consent items anyone would like to pull for a separate vote? Okay, cool. All right, so secretary Boswell, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, I move to approve agenda item 8.1, items 9.1 through 9.4, items 10.1 through 10.4, items 11.1 through 11.3, and items 12.1 and 12.2.
Okay, great. Is there a second? Any discussion? All right, so having a motion by secretary Boswell and a second by trustee Sabata to approve consent items 8.1, 9.1 through 9.4, 10.1 through 10.4, 11.1 through 11.3, 12.1 and 12.2. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All right, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And now, so one of the items, 12.2, was regarding the naming of the Langford Music, Langford Elementary School Music Room. And I believe trustee Sabata wanted to say a few words on that.
Well, we had a caller this evening, I think it was Mr. Kibbe, who made this recommendation to honor a former teacher from Langford and name the new, when the new facility is built, to name the new, is it the music room? One of the rooms after him. So we are, they did the process. They, he took it to the campus advisory council. They, he met with the community and everyone's in agreement. So I moved that we, we approved the naming of this, I don't have the name on me, I'm sorry. Mr. Jason Common? Connor, I'm sorry. That Jason Connor be honored, be recognized in memory of Jason Connor for the naming of the new, I believe it's the music room? Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we will now move to those items pulled from the, oh, we didn't have anything pulled from the agenda, but we have an item for, for a separate vote. So secretary Boswell, do we have a motion to approve item 13.1?
Yes, I move to approve agenda item 13.1, resolution to conduct efficiency audit.
Is there a second? Second. All right. Any discussion on this item? All right, so having a motion by secretary Boswell and a second by trustee Sabata to approve item 13.1. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, so we will now recess the open meeting at 9:05 PM and move to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, 551.076, 551.0821, and 551.071. When we are finished with exec session, we'll briefly return to the open session to take action on transfer appeals and to formally adjourn the meeting. So the action and adjournment will be recorded and be included in all replays of tonight's meeting. So thank you so much for joining us and have a great evening. Okay. All right, so we are now back in open session at 11:33 PM. So do, and we will go through our transfer appeals. So secretary Boswell, do I have a motion on agenda item 16.1, the transfer appeal on behalf of AB?
Yes, I move to affirm the decision of the superintendent and deny the relief requested.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All right, we'll now vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All right, the motion passes unanimously. Do I have a motion on agenda item 16.2, the transfer appeal on behalf of CM?
Yes, I move to affirm the decision of the superintendent and deny the relief requested.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. All right, next we have, do I have a motion on agenda item 16.3, the transfer appeal on behalf of GG?
Yes, I move to affirm the decision of the superintendent and deny the relief requested.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All right, we will now vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Do I have a motion on agenda item 16.4, the transfer appeal on behalf of HH?
Yes, I move to affirm the decision of the superintendent and deny the relief requested.
Is there a second?
I second.
Discussion? All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion passes unanimously. Do I have a motion on agenda item 16.5, the transfer appeal on behalf of JG?
Yes, I move to affirm the decision of the superintendent and deny the relief requested.
Is there a second?
I second.
Discussion? All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. And the last one, do I have a motion on agenda item 16.6, the transfer appeal on behalf of MH?
Yes, I move to affirm the decision of the superintendent and deny the relief requested.
Is there a second?
I second.
Discussion? All right, we will now vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you all so much. Okay, so we will now, all right, so do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
I second.
Having a motion by secretary Boswell and a second by trustee Sabata to adjourn. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. The meeting is adjourned at 11:35 PM. Thank you.